Did you test, illegal test? Excuse me. Hey Kate.
Yep, Kate tested.
Illegal tested that brand-new camera.
We're all good.
Alright, good deal.
Thanks Eric.
You're very welcome.
Hi, it's Marty Shelby. How are you?
Hey Marty. Welcome to the evening.
Well, thank you. Um, Kate, um, the sample motions, are they printed out of you already yet? Otherwise I have to do it up my end, you know?
I emailed them to each of the council members this morning.
Okay, they can be printed out if they want to. Okay, I'll see what I can do. I'll see if I can do it. Okay.
And there was also an email from Susan Johnson, realized to see a sample motion.
Okay, great. Thank you. This is all tonight from Clerk Danielle.
No, Eric, it'll be me, Julie, and Michelle and the Clerk.
Okay. Alrighty, sounds like all the tests are good, so I'll go ahead and back away. And then, um, you have us on check if you need us.
Thank you Eric.
Well, I've got a woman, sweet to be, that's why we call her, by the Lee. Love that woman, crazy about the way she do. Well, I want my baby, love time's all for you. Well, come on baby, treat me nice. I love my woman, love her twice, but goodbye baby, mother you call that gone. I've got a brand-new woman, move in your happy home. Well, sometimes I wonder, why don't you write? Look like she's forgotten, me every night. Come on baby, I'm in love with you. Well, you tell you be sweetie baby, and that's the way you do. So long baby, bye-bye. Sometimes I wonder, I keep on trying, goodbye baby, mother you call that gone. I've got a brand-new woman, move in your happy home.
Hello everyone, welcome to our Tampa City Council Evening Meeting. Roll call please.
Viera.
Here.
Gudes.
Here.
Carlson. Ding Felder. Sidro.
Here.
Miranda.
Here.
And Maniscaco.
Here.
There's a physical quorum present.
Thank you very much. Mr. Shelby, do you have to read the...
I certainly do sir. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, City Council members of the public. Martin Shelby, the City Council Attorney. Tonight's meeting, February 25th, 2021, is an evening hybrid agenda for quasi-judicial and other land use-related matters of the Tampa City Council. It is held during the COVID-19 state of emergency and conducted live with an in-person quorum present in the council chambers. However, in response to the COVID-19 restrictions, members of the public are encouraged to participate virtually through video teleconferencing referred to by Florida statutes and rules as Communications Media Technology, or CMT. These meetings are held in accordance with the emergency rules of procedure as adopted by Resolution Number 2020-225, as amended by Resolution Number 2020-490. The public and citizens of the city of Tampa are able to watch, listen, or view this meeting on cable TV Spectrum Channel 640, Frontier Channel 15, and on the internet at tampa.gov/livestream. The, um, public is able to participate in hybrid public hearings, which are going to be on tonight's agenda, by pre-registering remotely through CMT. And the way to do that is through the directions found at tampa.gov/quasi, Q-U-A-S-I. Now, in order to participate via CMT, you must have access to a communications media device such as a tablet or a computer equipped with a camera and a microphone, and that will enable you to be seen by video and heard. Cell phones and smartphones are not compatible as they will not allow you to share your camera when connected. Now, if you are unable to register remotely by the deadline, you do have the opportunity to participate in person. And the way to do that is to utilize CMT facilities that are made available to the public by the city of Tampa here at Old City Hall, 315 East Kennedy Boulevard, on the second floor. Please note that the use of masks and social distancing inside the building are required. The public has had opportunity to comment via email, and, um, written comments received by mail or email have been distributed to the public and will also be included in the permanent record of the meeting. All public comments timely received by mail, email, or via CMT will be afforded equal consideration as if the public comments were made in person. Now, council, one more final thing that I just want to put on the agenda. And that registered applicants, if they use, um, remote sharing their screen or they use the overhead projector down on the second floor and they want what they're showing to be part of the clerk's file, uh, they should, uh, submit those via email at, um, actually, it should be, it says City Council, City Quasi Submissions at Tampa.gov. And, uh, we'll see that that gets forwarded to the clerk's file. Again, it's City Quasi, Q-U-A-S-I submissions, one word, at Tampa.gov. Also, uh, for those people who are participating on the platform, on the go-to webinar platform, please be advised, uh, do not chat, do not use the chat box during the hearings during tonight's meeting unless it's solely for technical difficulties, but nothing substantive, and please do not communicate, uh, anything, uh, except during the public hearing, uh, in the presence of the public. Thank you.
Thank you very much sir. May I have a motion to open the 5:01 PM public hearings? Motion for Councilman Sidro, second to Councilman Gudes, all in favor? Aye.
And if I may, Mr. Chair, if I may.
Go ahead sir.
I, I know, I just wanted to thank council members. I know, because when, when I leave, you four have to, have to stay there. So I, like I said, usually my mother, uh, picks up my son on, uh, Thursdays, but in February, she has a, an appointment with my oldest brother, uh, that precludes her from doing that. So I just wanted to thank you all for that. So, thank, thank you very much.
Yes sir. Okay, item number one.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I just want to say something for the record. I've been, uh, notified by the clerk that the correct email is councilquasi submissions@tampa.gov. One word, councilquasi submissions. Thank you for that correction.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Collins.
Um, can you share my screen please?
Uh, actually, you know what, can we, uh, we were thinking about how to speed up the process since they're all the same through number six. Do all your presentations and we can just vote all at once afterwards?
Okay, that works for me.
Okay, go ahead sir.
Mr. Chairman, this is Kate Wells. Have we opened the hearings for those items?
Yes, we did. We had a motion and a second and took a vote.
My apologies.
Okay, uh, this is Danny Collins with your planning commission staff. Um, the following, uh, plan amendments are related to the park amendments, and they are TACPA 20-25 through 2029, and then also TACPA 2031. Um, here is the locational maps of the six sites scattered throughout the cities. We'll be looking at Clifton-Dixon Tennis Complex in South Tampa, Fremont-Lanier Park, Seminole Heights Garden Center, um, in Seminole Heights Urban Village, um, Loretta Ingram Park. Um, and then we'll, uh, go downtown to Likes Gaslight Square Park, and then over down south to Palmasia Lions Park. Quick background, this is a publicly initiated request, uh, initiated by Tampa City Council, uh, to recognize existing city of Tampa parks. Each park is listed on the city of Tampa's dedicated park list. All sites would be recognized, uh, through the Recreation Open Space Future Land Use Designation. Um, the planning commission, uh, staff and the planning commission reviewed their requests and found it consistent with, uh, the Recreation Open Space policies. Um, and those policies are listed, uh, below. Um, our first park is, uh, Clifton-Dixon Tennis Complex. It's TACPA 20-25. Um, it's in the South Tampa Planning District, and more specifically, the Palmasia, uh, West Neighborhood. Um, here's an aerial map of the subject site and surrounding properties. Uh, you'll see it's on the northeast corner of South Park Avenue and North Watchers Avenue, and the surrounding areas predominantly residential. Um, this is looking west of the subject site from South Free Avenue. This is looking north, um, West Watchers Avenue. Um, this is looking at the adjacent parcel to the east of the subject site from West Washington Avenue. Um, currently, the subject site's under that residential tent, future land use designation. It's, uh, surrounded by that residential town on all sides. As proposed, uh, the site would be recog- recognized the Recreation Open Space category, uh, shown in this green color. Um, the request would remove the potential of, uh, 19 dwelling units or 82,764 square feet of non-residential development. Uh, planning commission, uh, reviewed their request and recommends that the proposed map amendment be found consistent with the goals and objectives and policies of Imagine 2040, Tampa Comprehensive Plan. Do you want me to proceed to the next one?
Any questions? No? Alright, go ahead sir.
Our next park is, uh, TACPA 2026. It's Fremont-Lanier Park. Uh, it's in the central Tampa Planning District. And more specifically, it's in the old West Tampa neighborhood. Um, here's an aerial map of the subject sites and the surrounding properties. Uh, the park consists of five parcels, scattered along North Fremont Avenue. Uh, this is looking at the subject site from North Fremont Avenue. Uh, this is looking east along West Pine Street. The subject site would be on our left-hand side. Uh, this is standing on the subject site looking south across West Pine Street. Uh, this is, uh, the adopted future land use map. All parcels are currently within that residential 35 future land use designation. This is the proposed future land use map shown on the subject site under that Recreation Open Space category. The request would remove the potential of 22 dwelling units or 27,442 square feet of non-residential development, um, from the subject site. Uh, the planning commission, uh, recommends that the proposed map amendments, TACPA 2026, be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Imagine 2040 Tampa Comprehensive Plan. Um, do you have any questions?
Any questions? No, go to the next one.
Our next park is TACPA 2027. It's Seminole Heights Garden Center. It's within the central Tampa Planning District, and more specifically, in the old Seminole Heights neighborhood. Here's an aerial map of the subject site and the surrounding properties. Uh, you'll see it's on the, the west side of North Central Avenue, um, and on the north side of East Henry Avenue. This is looking south of the subject site from East Clifton Avenue. This is looking, uh, south along North Central Avenue. The subject site would be out of frame to the right. This is looking north of the subject site from East Henry Avenue. Um, currently, the subject site's under the residential 10 future land use designation, and surrounded by that residential town on all sides. Uh, this is the proposed future land use site recognizing the site under the Recreation Open Space category. Um, the requ- the request would remove the potential of 27, uh, residential units or just under 119,000 square feet of non-residential development from the subject site. Um, the planning commission recommends that the proposed map amendment, TACPA 2027, be found consistent, uh, with the city of Tampa Comprehensive Plan. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? Alright, next one.
Our next park is TACPA 2028. It's where our Ingram Park. Uh, it's in the West Shore Planning District. More specifically, it's in the Carver City Lincoln Gardens neighborhood. Here's an aerial map of the subject site and the surrounding properties. Um, it's just on the west side of North Lois Avenue and on the north side of West Green Street. See the, probably surrounded by residential, um. This is looking at the subject site. This is looking south along North Hebert Avenue. The entrance to the park is out of the frame to our left, so it'd be over on this side, my mouse is pointing. Um, this is looking north along North He- Hebert Avenue. The subject site is out of the frame to our right. This, uh, currently under the, um, currently, subject site's under the residential 10 future land use designation. Uh, couple blocks to the north, and then to the east of the subject sites, uh, recognized the recre- or the Regional Mixed Use 100 designation. Um, this is the proposed future land use map, uh, shown the subject site under the Recreation Open Space category. Uh, this request for remove the potential 35 dwelling units from the subject site or, uh, just over 54,000 square feet of non-residential development. Um, planning commission recommends that the proposed map amendment, TACPA 2028, be found consistent, uh, with the city of Tampa Comprehensive Plan. Any questions?
Any questions or comments? Nope. Alright, next one.
Our next park is TACPA 2029. It's Likes Gaslight Square Park. It's in the central Tampa Planning District. Um, it's within the central business district and also, uh, downtown River Arts neighborhood. This is an aerial map of the subject site and the surrounding properties. Um, it's just on the, on the north side of East Kennedy, um, and then on the south side of East Madison, just the, east of North Tampa Street. This is, uh, standing within the park looking north. Uh, this is looking northwest, uh, from the intersection of North Franklin Avenue and West Kennedy Boulevard. Uh, this is looking at the subject site from West Kennedy Boulevard. This is the adopted future land use map. Currently, it's under the central business district, uh, future land use designation. This is the proposed future land use map, uh, recognizing the site under the Recreation Open Space category. Um, since the sites within, currently within the CBD, uh, the maximums are not, are not be defined, um, as proposed, uh, the subject site, uh, would not be, would remove the potential of residential and non-residential development on the subject site. Planning commission, uh, recommends that the proposed map amendment, TACPA 2029, be found consistent with the Tampa Comprehensive Plan. Are there any questions?
Do we have any questions? No, alright.
Our last park is TACPA 2031. Uh, it's Palmasia Lions Park. It's in the South Tampa Planning District, and more specifically, in the Candy Sunday South neighborhood. Here's an aerial map of the subject site and the surrounding properties. Uh, you'll see the surrounding areas predominantly residential in character. Uh, this is looking, uh, at the subject site from West Pearl Avenue. This is standing within the park and looking north. Uh, this is standing within the park and looking east. Um, currently, this, a majority of the sites, uh, currently under that Recreation Open Space category. The sliver just on the north side of the property is, uh, recognized under the residential 10 designation. Uh, you'll see it's predominantly surrounded by that residential town on all sides. This is the proposed future land use map, uh, recognizing the entire site under the Recreation Open Space category. Um, this would, uh, this request will remove the potential of one dwelling unit or just over 2,700 square feet of non-residential development on the subject site. And planning commission, uh, recommends that the proposed map amendment, TACPA 2031, be found consistent, uh, with the city of Tampa Comprehensive Plan. Um, and that concludes all the parks.
Any questions? No. Do you have anybody for public comment for items number one through six?
No one has registered to speak on these items.
And is there anybody on the second floor here in person to speak on items one through six?
This is Eileen Rosario from Development and Growth, and there's no one here to speak on these items.
Very good. Can I get a motion to close of one through six? Motion to close from Councilman Gudes, second to Councilman Sidro, all in favor? Aye. Uh, Mr. Shelby, do we have to do a, a vote on each and every one, or can we take a vote on all of them?
Uh, each one has to be read individually by title only with a roll call vote for each one, and then just go down the list.
Okay, Councilman Carlson, would you mind reading item number one?
Yes sir. Uh, I'd like to move, uh, file number TACPA 2025, uh, ordinance being presented for first reading consideration. Ordinance amending the Imagine 2040 Tampa Comprehensive Plan, Future Land Use Element, Future Land Use Map for the property located at 4011 West Watchers Avenue, otherwise known as Clifton-Cow-Dixon Tennis Complex from Residential 10, R10, to Recreational Open Space, ROS, providing for appeal of all ordinances and conflict providing for severability, providing effectiveness.
So who?
Sidro.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Ding Felder. Gudes.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Viera.
Before I vote yes, I want to give a statement. I'm joking, yes.
And Maniscaco. Motion carried with Ding Felder being absent. Second reading and adoption will be held on March 18th at 9:30 AM.
Ladies and gentlemen, file number TA-CPA 20-26. Ordinance being presented for first reading consideration, an ordinance amending the Imagine 2040 Tampa Comprehensive Plan, Future Land Use Element, Future Land Use Map for the property located at 1714 in 1902 West Walnut Street and 1748 in 1902 West Cherry Street, otherwise known as Fremont-Lanier Park from Residence 35, R35, to Recreation Open Space, providing for appeal of all ordinance and conflict providing Ladies and gentlemen, file number T A dash C P A twenty-eight dash twenty-six ordinance being presented for first reading consideration and ordinance amending the Imagine Twenty Forty Tampa Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Element, Future Land Use Map for the property located at seventeen fourteen and nineteen oh two West Walnut Street and seventeen forty-eight and nineteen oh two West Cherry Street, otherwise known as Fremont Lanier Park from Residential Thirty-five, R- Thirty-five to Recreational Open Space, providing for appeal of all ordinances and conflict, providing severability, providing an effective date.
We have motion from Councilman Goode, second from Councilman Citro. Roll call vote.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Ding Felder? Goode?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Viera?
Yes.
And Maniscaco?
Yes.
Motion carried with Ding Felder being absent. Second reading and adoption will be held on March eighteen at nine thirty a.m.
Thank you. Councilman Citro, item number three?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. File number T A C P A twenty dash twenty-seven. An ordinance being presented for first reading consideration, an ordinance amending the Imagine Twenty Forty Tampa Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Element, Future Land Use Map for the property located at fifty-eight hundred North Central Avenue, otherwise known as Seminole Heights Garden Center from Residential Ten R- Ten to Recreational Open Space R O S, providing repeal of all ordinances and conflict, providing for severability, providing for an effective date.
Second? Councilman Citro, second from Councilman Miranda, roll call vote.
Viera?
Yes.
Viera?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Goode?
Yes.
Ding Felder? Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
And Maniscaco?
Yes.
Motion carried with Ding Felder being absent. Second reading and adoption will be held on March eighteenth at nine thirty a.m.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Viera, item number four?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. I hereby move ordinance being presented for first reading consideration and ordinance amending the Imagine Twenty Forty Tampa Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Element, Future Land Use Map for the property located at sixteen eleven North Hubert Avenue, otherwise known as Loret Ingram Park from Residential Ten R- Ten to Recreational Open Space R slash O S, providing for appeal of all ordinances and conflict, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
Second?
We have motion from Councilman Viera, second from Councilman Citro. Roll call vote.
Goode?
Yes.
Ding Felder? Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Viera?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
And Maniscaco?
Yes.
Motion carried with Ding Felder being absent. Second reading and adoption will be held on March eighteenth at nine thirty a.m.
Councilman Miranda, item number five?
Item number five, Chairman, file number T A C P A twenty, that's twenty-nine, presented, ordinance presented for first reading consideration and ordinance amending the Imagine Twenty Forty Tampa Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Element, Future Land Use Map for the property located four hundred North Franklin Street, otherwise known as Likes Gaslight Square Park from Central Business CBD to Recreation Open Space R slash O S, providing for appeal of all ordinances and conflict, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
Second?
May the motion from Councilman Miranda, second from Councilman Citro, all in favor? Roll call vote.
Viera?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Goode?
Yes.
Ding Felder? Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
And Maniscaco?
Yes.
Motion carried with Ding Felder being absent. Second reading and adoption will be held on March eighteenth at nine thirty a.m.
Councilman Carlson, would you mind reading item number six?
Sure. I'd like to move file number T A C P A twenty dash thirty-one ordinance being presented for first reading consideration ordinance amending the Imagine Twenty Forty Tampa Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Element, Future Land Use Map for the property located at forty-five twenty-five West Pearl Avenue, otherwise known as Palmasia Lions Park from Residential Ten R- Ten and Recreational Open Space R O S to Recreational Open Space R O S, providing for appeal of all ordinances and conflict, providing for severability, providing effective date.
Second?
We have a second from Councilman Miranda, roll call vote.
Citro?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Ding Felder? Goode?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Viera?
Yes.
And Maniscaco?
Yes.
Motion carried with Ding Felder being absent. Second reading and adoption will be held on March eighteenth at nine thirty a.m.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion to open item number seven? Second? Councilman Citro, second from Councilman Goode, all in favor? Aye. All right. Wait, actually, we can't open it because it's not five-thirty yet. It's five-twenty-seven. In the meantime, let's go to new business. Councilman Carlson, do you have anything for new business this evening?
No, sir, thank you.
Councilman Goode, do you have anything for new business?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. You've probably heard of the recent situations going on with the Hillsborough County School District. I've had several calls. I guess people think that council runs a school district, but I've had several calls as it relates to my district and possible schools that are maybe closing, maybe employees maybe losing their jobs. So I'd like to get the superintendent of Hillsborough County Schools to come before council to give us an explanation in reference to what's going on, especially as it relates to our lower marginalized areas and communities.
When would you like that, sir?
I would say at least within a couple of weeks because things are moving fast over there and we need to get some information.
We have a regular meeting March eighteenth or next Thursday, which is short notice. Let's say March eighteenth. All right, we have motion from Councilman Goode. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Citro, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And may I follow up with a question to Councilman? Your office will arrange for that invitation.
I'll have my office called over there to get the arrangements made.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Anything else, sir? No? Councilman Citro, sir?
Mr. Chair, I will try and do it within one minute. Last week, I went on a rant and I will complete my rant by today. Ladies and gentlemen of the public, the City of Tampa writes codes and ordinances that we feel are the best for this city. But we have legislators in Tallahassee that want to preempt us from doing our duties, to doing your will. Let me just give you a few. Senate Bill two sixty-six, Home-Based Businesses. Senate Bill five twenty-two, Rent Vacation Rentals, my favorites. Preemption of tree pruning and trimming. Again, I will not tell you the, the effort that was put in by this city, the builders and, and, and the homeowner associations on our tree. Senate Bill five ninety-six, House Bill twenty sixty-three. We got a couple others. I'm sorry, I'm going to continue on this. Senate Bill eight fifty-six and House Bill eight thirty-nine, which is state preemption of energy infrastructure regulations. Ladies and gentlemen, these will stop any type of changes that cities, counties, and municipalities want to have to regulate their clean air and their clean water through fossil fuel infrastructures. Ladies and gentlemen, if you want to see these things change, contact your state representative, contact your state senators, and tell them to vote no on all preemption bills. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Amen. Councilman Viera?
Sorry. Yes, Mr. Chair, so I'm, I'm looking at my language here. I, I have, y'all, y'all should see my first year, my, the battle, and I say that very lovingly with myself, and then Chairman Reddick over commendations. He said, man, you're giving a commendation to everybody in New Tampa, aren't you? And I think I did. No, but, you know, we, we recently got the news that the Florida Supreme Court struck down All For Transportation penny sales tax. That, that, you know, I mean, just, we all agree that that's a terrible blow. To call that a terrible blow is an understatement for, for our community. Over three hundred million dollars, almost about well over four billion dollars in the next decade that could be potentially lost in spite of the fact that almost three in five voters, Republicans, Democrats, and independents came together to support this initiative. So I, I'm motioning that Tampa City Council do a letter to our friends in the Hillsborough County Commission urging them to put on the ballot again a plan with basic pillars that, that I'll just go into very briefly that includes a one cent dedicated funding source with the same split that All For Transportation previously had with guaranteed funding for safety, transit, congestion relief, maintenance, so that we can fashion a, a, a plan to vote for that is consistent with Florida law as defined by the Supreme Court, but that still gets us to where we need to go with regards to our mass transit and other transportation and basic public safety needs. And I can work on that letter with Mr. Shelby. It's not rocket science to have to us by next week, if I may. And so that would be it. And then with regards to my motion for what, 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 what we can do with a lawsuit, well, that's kind of done, isn't it? So I, I would request that at that time, and we can have it continued, by the way, if, if, if staff needs more, just that legal brief is with regards to, because, because I don't know what, what, what happens to the money. Does anybody know? I, I've, I've been busy. But just inquire in that regard. But, but my motion is just with regards to the letter, if I may.
Second?
Yes, sir.
No, no, no. Take up that motion and I'll come back with a question for you, Councilman, after, after, after the council votes, please.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Viera has a motion, second from Councilman Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes, Mr. Shelby?
Yes, Councilman Viera, I just want to see if you're wanting to amend your motion because right now, this is the way it reads for staff reports for March fourth for next week. Or it could just stay on the agenda the way it is and, and you'll be able to...
Yeah, we, we can, we can keep it the way that it is. And, and I say this to any of our city attorneys who are watching, if you guys need more time for that, obviously, that's a hundred percent fine. But we could take advantage of that time to talk about what's going to happen with the fifty-six million dollars that, that should go to the city because I, I don't know. I quickly, in like a minute, scanned through the decision. I didn't see anything on there. I don't know if there's something by operation of law. I don't know. So we could talk, use that time to talk about it. So it's just an advisory request on my part.
Thank you.
But if, but again, if they need more time, because I know they're very busy, especially after this morning, then we can work that out.
And also, just so you know, counsel, next week, there are presently eleven staff reports and there are sixteen second reads, a review hearing, and then again, there's also the vote on the Purple Heart Bar and Lounge, the alcoholic beverage suspension hearing. Just to remind you, put everything next week into context for you. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else, sir?
Nothing. If I, if I do, I'll do it tonight, but I don't think I do.
Councilman Miranda, do you have any new business, sir?
No, none.
Councilman Ding Felder?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next week on the fourth, we were scheduled to address the, the moratorium issue, the land use moratorium issue. Had some lengthy discussions with the legal staff, with the planning staff, as well as with the South Aganti community. And I think it'd be in everybody's best interests and having been the maker of the motion originally to defer this from the, from February fourth to February eighteenth.
March, you mean, sir?
March, you mean?
Yes, that too.
All right.
March fourth, March fourth to March eighteenth. And that way, it'll give everybody an opportunity to continue to work, work on this ordinance and, and hopefully come to an agreement. That would be my motion.
Motion from Councilman Ding Felder, second from Councilman Goode, all in favor?
Aye. All right.
Anything else?
Not for now. Maybe later.
Excuse me. In, in, in my soapbox standing up, I forgot to mention a ordinance that our Councilman Viera set forth for apprenticeship programs, that that was preempted. So I forgot that and I shouldn't have. My dear friend is sitting here to the, to my right. People, if you don't want preemption, please contact your state representative, state senators.
Thank you very much. Councilman Ding Felder?
Yes, sir. One other little housekeeping from this afternoon. So I'm trying, Mr. Chairman, you can probably remind me, what date did we defer all of those, those changes to? The next time we'll be seeing the CRB ordinance would be in May, was it?
I remember a June date. Let me look.
Oh, June, okay.
Let me see. I think there was a May, May twentieth. I'm sorry, sir, May twentieth.
Okay. So what my motion would be in regard to the, the issue about the independent council putting it, you know, getting language and, and, you know, preparing language for it to go on as a charter amendment. I want my motion to stay the same, but I'd like to defer that to the same date so, so everything CRB related comes back at the same time. So that would be my motion to, what did you say, May twentieth?
May twentieth, yes, sir.
It would be, it would be to take the same motion that passed earlier, but just defer, defer so legal council doesn't feel pressure, defer that until May twentieth.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry if I could un, correct me if I'm wrong, but the charter changes, I believe, were set for June seventeenth. I don't know whether that's the case. I, I believe that's what I wrote down. So I don't know whether...
Was it June?
I, I believe, I believe the charter, I believe that the charter changes were set for June and I, the coming back.
There was only one, there was only one that, that went forward. The other one, I pulled back on. All right. So let, well, let's have it all come back at the same time on, in May twentieth then.
Well, that's the question is whether that one month difference would make a difference to the legal department. I can't say, but if that's the council's direction, they'll address it.
Okay. Well, they, if they want, they can tell me about it and I'll change it again, but I'm just trying to get everything CRB at the same time.
We have motion from Councilman Ding Felder. Do we have a second? Second from Councilman Goode, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Very good. We opened the five-thirty public hearings because we made a motion for it, so we go to item number seven.
The motion again, because the motion will take...
Second.
Thank you.
Motion from Councilman Miranda, second from Councilman Viera, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, number seven.
Good evening, counsel. This is Patrick Perez, Assistant City Attorney. I know you had a long day, so I'll try to keep this brief. This is a public hearing in reference to the West San Jose Streetlight Special Assessment. This resolution is brought pursuant to Chapter one ninety-seven Florida statutes relating to the Uniform Method, the levying collection of non-adborne assessments. This resolution is the city's notice of intent to use non-adborne assessment for this special lighting district. If approved, there would be a second public hearing in the summer to adopt the role for the special assessment. David Kilcoin is a representative petitioner and he should be on the line if you have any questions.
All right. Being that it's non-quasi-judicial, Mr. Shelby, we don't have to swear the gentleman in?
This is non-quasi-judicial.
Okay. If the gentleman is on the line, you said it was Kilcoin?
Yes, sir. It should, like, David Kilcoin, he, he, he should have been able to call in.
If Mr. Kilcoin is on the line, can you hear us? Unmute yourself? Mr. Kilcoin? Yes, we can. Go ahead, sir.
My name is David Kilcoin. I'm representing the homeowners of, the fifty homeowners of West San Jose Street, and we are requesting that we are...
Oh, you did? What'd you say?
That'd be the power, I'm sorry?
Go ahead, sir, go ahead.
We're, we're requesting to put the streetlight, new streetlights on our tax bill. We are actually in the process of removing or undergrounding all of the utilities on our street. And we have fifty homes and we have forty-nine signed signatures approving this.
Okay.
I also have Tony Martino, who is also working with me on the project. Tony, do you have any comments?
Mr. Martino, can you hear us? If you can, please unmute yourself. Do you have anything, sir? Mr. Martino?
Tony, the, the mute, they see the microphone symbol? He may not be able to hear you. I'm sure he hears you, but I don't think he can talk.
Okay. Does he have anything else to add?
Just a second. Tony, do you have anything else to add? She, he's been muted by the organizer.
Can we unmute Mr. Martino? You're unmuted, sir, by us.
You're unmuted. I don't, we still can't hear you. We still can't hear you, Tony. No. Nonetheless.
Okay.
Do you have any other questions?
Do we have any questions for the gentleman? Do we have anybody in the public that wishes to speak on item number seven?
There are no registered speakers to speak on this item.
All right.
Move to close.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I just want to have a confirmation, and maybe Mr. Perez knows this. Normally, and I don't know, my recollection is that special assessments might have to be adopted, the resolution during the public hearing. Do you know that to be the case?
So this will be the first, so this is the first, first of two hearings. This is the city's notice of intent to use the non-adlorm, so this will be coming back over the summer before the adoption.
So the, so the item on the agenda of the resolution is to not have any action taken on that, is that correct?
No, I thought, no, you will take action on this resolution.
Okay, okay, very good. I see.
Yes, because this resolution will be sent to the tax collector, and once the tax collector receives that, that's, it helps process the role for the second public hearing, which is usually in August.
Understood. Thank you very, very much for that clarification. Thank you.
Move to close.
We have motion to close from Councilman Citro, second from Councilman Goode, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Who wishes to move this resolution?
Chair, I'll move the resolution.
Motion from Councilman Citro, second from Councilman Miranda, roll call vote.
Citro?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Ding Felder?
Yes.
Goode?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Viera?
Yes.
And Maniscaco?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously?
All right.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you very much. We are in recess until six o'clock. We have to wait till six to open those review hearings. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Honey, now let your head go, boy. We don't have no bed. Honey, by you know where you go. Goodbye, little one. All I've got to say. Give me back my wiggy, baby. Oh, little Mary, where you going? Give me back my wig. Honey, now let your head go, boy. We don't have no bed. Honey, by you know where you go. Mama, mama, talk to your daughter for me. Mama, mama, talk to your daughter for me. She made me love, ain't gonna live a day. Late at night, she called me in my dream. Late at night, called me in my dream. I was just wondering what did she want of me. Mama, talk to your daughter.
Talk to your daughter.
Talk to your daughter.
Talk to your daughter.
Mama, talk to your daughter.
Talk to your daughter.
Mama, talk to your daughter.
Talk to your daughter.
She made me love, ain't gonna live a day. My mama told me love will call down.
Say what? Say what?
My mama told me love will call down.
Say what? Say what?
I'm in love with you, baby, I just can't help myself. That girl I like.
The way she walk.
That girl I like.
The way she talk.
That girl I like.
The way she do.
Mama telling you, baby, it's only you. You better watch yourself, baby. Might do something to you. My mama told me love will call down.
Say what? Say what?
My mama told me love will call down.
Say what? Say what?
I'm in love with you, baby, I just can't help myself. That girl I like.
The way she walk.
That girl I like.
The way she talk.
That girl I like.
The way she do.
Mama telling you, baby, it's only you. You better watch yourself, baby. Might do something to you. I wanna get close to you, baby, like white on rice. Close to your girl, just like spots on the dice. Close to you, baby, as the hair on your head. Close to your girl, you better believe what I said. I wanna get close to you, baby. Yeah, let me get close to you. Wanna get so close to this woman. She don't know what to say or do. I wanna get as close to you, baby. As sight to your eyes, just as close to your girl as heat is to fire. Close to you, baby, like an egg is to a hen. Close to your girl, just like starry skies. I wanna get close to you, baby. Yeah, let me get close to you. Wanna get so close to this woman. She don't know what to say or do. Well, now closer and closer, babe. I wanna get closer and closer, baby. Wanna get closer and closer, baby. Let me get closer and closer to you, baby. Wanna get so close to this woman. She don't know what to say or do. Yeah. I wanna get as close to you, baby.
Hello?
As I can get, just as close to you.
Here.
Citro?
Here.
Miranda?
Here.
And Maniscaco?
Here.
There's a physical corn present.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion to open items eight through thirteen? Motion from Councilman Goode, second from Councilman Citro, all in favor? Aye. All right. We begin with item number eight. If you are to speak, please raise your right hand, we'll swear you in.
I believe they're downstairs. I don't know how we're going to, uh, we could do out the staff if you wish to do that and then go downstairs. However, you want to prefer.
Well, we have the staff online here. I see Brian Knox, Cotton, and Jonathan Scott. All right.
Please swear a firm, you would tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, if I can, and I believe Ms. Wells is on, uh, line two, to be able to discuss. Are the, I, I believe both parties, for this item and for number nine, are on the second floor and will be participating via CMT, using the technology on, uh, the second floor of Old City Hall. But I did want to, for the record, provide them, and I know that Ms. Wells had emailed them in advance, the hearing procedures for the, these review hearings, both eight and nine, in that they are slightly different than what you normally hear, because frankly, um, this involves, from what I understand, two adjacent property owners. And, um, their positions in each of the cases are different, but they are going to be held similarly. And again, because they both have property rights, we're going to be conscious of the due process requirements in a quasi judicial hearing. So I have provided these to, as I said, uh, both parties, and I have provided a copy to the clerk. And council does have it. We can review them now, but they are before you. And I would like council, unless there are any objections of any parties on two, to, uh, to adopt these hearing, uh, these procedures for, uh, hearing items eight and nine. So if we could just go down to two and see if there's anybody who wants to, um, uh, have to feel the need to make anything for the record before we go ahead and do this.
All right, on the second level, if we have anybody present that is going to speak on item eight and nine, if we can, um, have them sworn in?
And I, we could do them separately, we'd rather than fill the kiosk with everybody.
All right, item number eight, if you're going to speak and you're on the second floor here in person, please come to the kiosk and we will swear you in.
We just swear in?
Yeah, I'm gonna swear you in.
Individually?
Yes, well, it depends. I'd rather have the parties come in separately, frankly.
Okay, so we'll swear them in one at a time?
I, I believe one, uh, person is represented by an attorney.
Okay. All right, I see someone at the, uh, kiosk. If you would raise your right hand, we'll swear you in.
I don't see the kiosk yet on my screen.
Okay.
There we go. Okay, thank you. Could you, uh, state your name, please?
Joe Murphy.
Okay, Mr. Murphy, please be sworn.
Do you swear a firm, you would tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Do you swear?
I, I do.
All right.
And these are for both. Can we do this, uh, for Ms. Wells, um, for items eight and nine while we have the witnesses here? Would that be sufficient?
Well, I, I believe they should be actually heard separately.
Okay, then let's do that. We'll swear in the witnesses again, if that's the case. Let's do that, we'll do that.
Okay.
Okay.
Now, okay, now who's the next party? Did you have any, do you have any objection to these, uh, these proceedings, the way they're presented?
Well, there's several people. Do you want to have them all come in here at one dime, or?
Well, let me ask you this. Let's get past the first, the procedural stage. You were provided with the procedures, um, as we are proposing them for tonight. Do you, uh, is there anything you want to say to that, or just, we'll just continue with the hearing?
No, the procedures are fine. I read them and then.
Okay, good, then why don't we, why, then why don't we come and swear in the other, the other?
You want to swear the other party in?
Well, I want to know whether that, if they agree to these procedures or have anything that they feel they need to put on the record. So if we can switch positions, we'll sterilize the lectern, and then, um, we'll bring in the other party and get them sworn in, and then we can begin.
Okay, I'll step out.
Thank you, sir. A little complicated tonight, council. Thank you for bearing with us. Now we need somebody to wipe the lectern.
Mr. Chairman, forward, forward.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, uh, I'm a little confused here. Are we swearing in all the witnesses for this particular case, item number eight?
No, what I'm asking for are the, the actual, um, uh, two of the parties. One of them is, is going to be the applicant petitioner, and the other one is going to be designated the aggrieved person or property owner. So what I'm asking them to do is I want them to have an opportunity, having looked at these procedures, that, um, if there's anything they need to say, they could say it now, otherwise I'm going to ask council just to approve these and get going.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Sir, did you want to address council? Okay, let's swear them in first. Do you want to, um, um, state your names for the record, and then, and then we can swear you in?
Michael Gonzalez.
Thank you.
Darryl Mcateer.
Thank you, and you want to swear them in, please?
Raise your right hand, we'll swear you in.
Do you swear a firm, you would tell the truth, the whole truth, the whole? Do you swear a firm, you would tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do, yes, I do.
Very good.
Thank you.
And now that being said, is there anything that you wish to put on? You've gotten a copy of these procedures. Is there anything you wish to put on the record before we proceed? Could you just speak a little closer?
Go into the microphone, we can't, we can't hear you. If you can get closer.
Thank you. I'd like to thank council for going through the effort to recognize the procedures on the record. That's all I want. We have no objection to the procedures themselves. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. If you could just, um, now, uh, who, we'll get the, we're going to get the presentation, we're going to get the presentation in the, by the medical department. Okay, if you could just take your seats. I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair, do we need to receive and file?
Oh, well, here, uh, yes, I'm going to ask if there's any ex parte written documents pursuant to two eighty-six zero point zero one one five to be received and filed into the record. Again, they were, they have been uploaded and they were available for inspection.
All right, can we get a motion to receive and file?
Move to receive and file.
Motion from Councilman Citro, second from Councilman Goode. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I think we are ready for the, um.
We have two more? All right, come to this, to the lectern, we'll swear you in. Please state your names and speak into the microphone so we can hear. What are your names?
Names first, please.
Aaron Murphy.
I can't hear you, you have to speak into the microphone.
Speak into the microphone.
Aaron Murphy.
Okay, and you?
Suzanne Stinnet.
What is that name? I'm sorry, did you catch that?
Go ahead.
Okay.
Again?
Suzanne Stinnet.
Thank you.
All right, we'll swear you in.
Do you swear a firm, you would tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
All right.
Ms. Wells, I believe is.
Okay.
Standing by.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of city council. For the record, I'm Kate Wells, Chief Assistant City Attorney. This item is before you on a petition filed by Joseph Murphy, the owner of the property located at six nine one five North River Boulevard, seeking review of the zoning administrator's decision denying the design exception, which requested relief from section twenty-seven dash two eleven point two point one subsection A. Earlier today, council was provided with a copy of the hearing procedures for today's review, as well as sample motions. In addition, you have been provided with a copy of the review criteria in section twenty-seven dash sixty subsection E F. For purposes of tonight's hearing, city council applies the de novo standard of review. Your decision is not limited to the record created by the zoning administrator. Instead, you can take public testimony, accept new evidence, and make a decision based upon the application meeting the criteria in section twenty-seven dash sixty subsection E five. Eric Cotton will provide an overview of the relief requested in the application and the basis for the city's decision. After considering all of the evidence introduced into the record of today's hearing, city council may uphold the zoning administrator's decision and thereby deny the application for design exception, or council may overturn the zoning administrator's decision and thereby approve the application for design exception. With that, I will turn the presentation over to Mr. Cotton, and I remain available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can, uh, IT get a little more volume?
Yeah, if we can turn up the volume.
Can't hear.
If we, yes, I, I, my microphone is louder, but I guess if we could turn it up on the, on the, um, uh, the platform, the web platform. And also, just for purposes of the record, um, just, if we can just make a motion to, uh, accept, the city council to accept the procedures for, um, the items eight and nine for tonight.
We have a motion for Councilman Citro, second for Councilman Goode, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? By unanimous consent, okay, thank you.
All right.
Good evening, council. May I share my screen, please? I have a quick PowerPoint. I know it's been a long day for everyone.
Go ahead, sir, we can see it.
Okay, thank you. So the, this is a, a petition for review, as Ms. Wells was saying, for DE one twenty dash sixty-six. The applicant was Joe Murphy for a property of sixty-nine fifteen River Boulevard. The applicant was seeking relief from section twenty-seven to eleven point two point one A for the placement of an unpermitted accessory structure. Property is owned S H R S, which is Seminole Heights Residential Single Family. The applicant was seeking to reduce the, um, the code requirements for six, for an accessory structure sixty feet from the front yard, three feet from the side and rear, and a building separation measured wall to wall of five feet and eve to eve of three feet. When it was going through the process, the planning and urban design coordinator denied the request. It didn't, uh, because the opinion of staff, the determination of staff, was that the request was not a minor require, not a minor reduction as required by twenty-seven dash sixty, which is the design exception criteria. The reduction in the front was from sixty feet to twenty-four point seven feet, which is about a sixty percent reduction. The building separation was from five feet to one foot, which is an eighty percent reduction. And of the eve to eve separation, the structures, as you'll see in a photo in a moment, was from three down to zero, which is a hundred percent reduction. This property is on North River. It dead ends, um, this is under, this is a dead end street. It ends, um, with a property highlighted in red. Across the street is the, um, the neighbor that's also here in, in, um, for the hearing tonight. This is a site plan that was presented at the, as part of the design exception. The blue is a one-story residence. You can see that the accessory structure is in green, as well as a shed in the back. So what, um, what's highlighted in the green on the north side of the property was the accessory structure that was asking for the reduction in the setbacks. So again, it's sixty feet was going down to twenty-four point seven. And then it was the, um, the wall to wall separation of five down to one, and from eve to eve from three down to zero. This is a view from the street. This is from the applicant's application from the, for the design exception. You can see the, the awning in the back. It's a carport used as a outdoor living area. Again, it's, this is the, the picture of the property. And I guess that was the last picture. So there's, there's, I'm, I'm, sorry, I neglected to show this, the photo, but the properties are, the carport structure that you see in this photo is directly adjacent to the building. There is no separation between the two. Hence, for the denial, it's, um, twenty-seven dash sixty, which is in your staff report, does state that the reduction is, should be minor in, in, should be a minor reduction, but the percentages are great, and therefore, the planning and urban design coordinator denied the request. As a result, the applicant has filed for the petition for review. Does council have any questions regarding that?
Do you have any questions for the gentleman? Hearing none, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Next up? Go ahead, sir, please state your name.
Okay, my name's Joe Murphy.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, I first wanted to point out that the, uh, the denial letter actually stated that there was not a, um, hardship. However, this request was not for hardship because it's not asking for a variance, but it's actually looking at the design and making sure that it conforms to the design criteria under the Seminole Heights overlay. Of course, they had to, uh, the, uh, zoning administrator in his designee were supposed to look at the property and apply these seven steps to determine if it was acceptable or not. Here, the exception number one, or A, all the improvements are on the property, so there is no, uh, injurious to, injury to the public health, safety, or general welfare of the public. It's, it's self-contained, and the only way to get onto the property is if there is a trespass. That, it should be noted that the, uh, structure has been in place for nine years. The exception is reasonable under the, under the specialized circumstances because it, the improvements in center, uh, structures are used to enjoy the waterfront and help the secure environment for the homeowner and the grandchildren. The exception apply, uh, provides the ability to separate private areas from the neighbor's pool, spa, and smoking areas, including HVAC and pool mechanical systems. The exception is less intrusive than adjacent properties improvements, and it is in set the best location to preserve the top of the bank. The exception meets the general welfare. As we mentioned earlier, the, uh, the intent of chapter twenty-seven is to provide a safe and enjoyable, uh, atmosphere to rear children and for the homeowner. The exception is mentally possible. The structure is indeed attached to the house to preserve the natural habitat of the existing top of the bank, natural trees and environmental habitat. The improvements are less intrusive than surrounding properties, providing same amenities and not adjacent. Uh, the approval of the exception standards includes conditions of, uh, approval as necessary, and there were no conditions in this, uh, uh, denial. And the exception is consistent with the plans in place. The structure does match the initial design and aesthetics of the existing home. The hardship, again, uh, this is not a hardship case, so therefore, we're going to skip beyond this. This is just some history of the parcel. Uh, this is Goldstein Springs. And we're looking at the property here. You see that in the blue to the top, there's a tidal ditch. And the yellow is indeed the, uh, the canopy that was installed. And that's the one that we're looking to, uh, get the exception with regard to the setbacks. The, uh, this is a, from the EPC, the report that shows that, uh, they came out, did a delineation report, and that in their notes, the development depicted in the plans occurred in approximately two thousand and eleven. Upon inspection of the site, no violations of chapter one dash eleven are evident, which is the state, uh, wetland statute. They also said this project was, as submitted, is consistently justified to move forward through the variance review process, which in this situation, to re, reduce the, uh, uh, wetland setback. During the, this, this case initially went to, uh, um, the variance review board, and it was there for six months or so, and then it was kicked back. During the time it was in the variance review board stage, a, um, staff report was issued from the Natural Resources Department, which indicated that there was a, uh, a, an oak tree, but it was not a grand oak, and that there are, uh, it was submitted to EPC for review by the engineer, and there is no erosion or environmental concerns, based on the fact that the encroachment occurred over five years ago, with no apparent environmental degradation. Natural Resources find the request consistent, uh, in meeting the intent of the state, uh, chapter. Uh, this is the proximity map of owners who support the property, the project. And the improvements, you see the subject property in yellow. Across the, uh, the tidal ditch are two individuals. And then there's a property owner, one house removed to the south. And then there are two additional property owners on the street, uh, again, uh, to the south of the property. This is the intent and purpose of section twenty-seven dash two. Again, as you can see, make a more favorable environment in which to rear children, to stabilize and enhance property and civic values. Uh, with regard to the Seminole Heights provision, the intent is to off, is to, to round out dimensioning, uh, requirements other than, uh, other site spatial relationships to the proceeding within the established block and generally the surrounding areas. Again, this, these are the seven steps, again. Here, it's good, it's good to know what we're talking about. Building accessory, there is a detached form, and there's also an attached form. And also, we should be looking at accessory structures where there is a, uh, covered walkway on at least two sides, may be attached to the structure as well, and this would be, um, given for a breezeway. When you were doing, when they did the, uh, evaluation, they should have actually looked at the, the building model. And in this situation, the type, our form type of the building is actually a ranch, and it's considered a, um, a modern, a contemporary modern. And this is a good, a good picture of that is in this picture here, if we could switch over. And you can see.
Thank you.
Actually, I'm going to throw up another one. You can see here, the, the subject property, how it is ranch style, flat roofs, low sloping roofs, and a substantial amount of window space in the front of the property. Approximately sixty percent of the frontage is window and door space. Okay, switch back, please. Switch back, please. Given that it's a contemporary modern, you can see that some of the characteristics of this, um, building form is that it does have carport, normally seen with a carports, the side and front air orientations, carports, uh, roof may be incorporated under the same roof as principal structure. But it must not project further from the principal facade forward of the, uh, front of the property. Here, you can see, and, and this is the connection, which is a structural connection from the, um, the cover to the, uh, primary building. Here are the structural drawings as submitted from the engineer, from the, uh, manufacturer of the, uh, the cover. Here is the wind rating. The cover is actually rated to a hundred and thirty-eight mile. The cover is actually rated to 138 miles an hour wind gust. Here are the setbacks that are available to the property. If you take a look at the primary building there to the left, you'll see that F is for front, S is for side. There's two footnotes under five, the front and side, build to line, which is basically that all the properties on the street should be in alignment with their front exposure. And adjacent services on either side of the lot, same storefront orientation. If there is a side, the minimum side setback for a porter casier or carport or this cover would be three feet on the side. The property has received approval to reduce the setbacks and the wetland setbacks from 25 feet to seven, which would be ample space on the side to be able to install the covered structure. This is the walkway, how it shows given access from the front of the property to the rear. If you notice there in the roof line, all the panels run horizontally. There is a rib and pan structure that channels all rainwater to the front of the property. This is the fencing that's in the, in front of the building. The fencing is PVC. As a matter of fact, code enforcement was called on my fencing, and they came out, inspected it, and approved it for tight materials site and site and, when I say site, meaning that it's not in front of the front of the building. So it can be a six-foot PVC fence. These are the improvements that were made. They provide a safe and large play area for my grandchildren to enjoy. It also provides outdoor living enjoyment and pet security. These are the street views. As you can see, driving down the street, you don't see the improvements. Here it is, once you come up at the end of the street, looking to the east, and there's the structure. This is the view from 408 West Floral, which is across the tidal ditch, and you can see the fencing, and that the structure is not higher than the peaks of the existing structure. This is the view from 406 West Floral. And as you can see, you can't see the, barely can see the shed that's in the back because of the jasmine fence that's there. This is the shed itself. As you can see, it is not portable. There are no lifting points. There are no wheels, and there's no tongue to move the place, move it once it's in place. It's sitting on a pier and floorjoy system and permanently secured to the ground. These are some examples. This is Robson in the neighborhood. This is at Henry, which is about eight blocks away. This is at 3898 West Sly, which is actually 602, I'm sorry, 601 North River Boulevard, which is at the end of the street. This is another structure within the community, about three blocks away, is on Duncan. As you can see, again, they're using aluminum and steel leg supports. This one is on Duncan Avenue, about four blocks away from the subject property. And as you can see, there is another structure there with the aluminum roof and the steel legs. And these are just some other ones. This one is at 308 West Sly, which is actually 6905 North Ola Avenue. And it's the same structure that I built and installed on the, on my property. I mean, it's the exact same structure. Here are the other structures in the neighborhoods that are adjacent or in Seminole Heights. As you can see, there's three different types here. These are the improvements that are on the ditch itself. This is looking across the canal in 2020. And in 2010, if you take a look on 2010, you can actually see another building or shed at the mouth of the tidal ditch. This is the new construction that was built, or CO'd in '29. It allowed to, it was allowed to encroach into the wetland setbacks. Patio is five feet from top of bank, and the principal building is 15 feet from the top of the bank. The main structure further inward is actually at about 18 feet from top of bank. This is a patio that was built at the mouth of the tidal ditch. It is fully concrete, is actually built over the root systems of some protected trees, and right now probably considered grand oaks. Again, this is the proximity map of who is agreed to support, and these are the letters of support. This is basically a petition that was sent out trying to gain support for the opposition. It asks, it talks about spring fed creeks, but there are no spring fed creeks in Seminole Heights. And secondly, Mr. Gonzalez failed to disclose that his principal resident patios and mechanical equipment are built within the approval, without approval in the wetland setback. In the breakdown of the petition, there are 17 signatures outside the 250-foot proximity, four renters, two owners, one on Ola, one on River Boulevard, and that one on River Boulevard actually supported my improvements. There's one fictitious address on the listing, it's 6910. There is no 6910 North River Boulevard. And then there are two petitioner household signatures. These are the pictures he, that they tried to submit. There is no obstruction of emergency fire hydrants or emergency systems, as you can see here. The car that is parked is entirely on the property with current registration. To the right, you will see the fencing. This is typical parking also in front of the hydrant and to the side of the house. The fencing there was, has been adjusted because we had a major storm that came through, and it shifted, and we made the necessary corrections to ensure its safety and durability. These are the fire hydrants in other parts. As you can see, fire hydrants have three operational sides, two to provide water, one for cleanout, and the backside is always placing the private property so to prevent trespassing or property damage by personnel. And Mr. Gonzalez certainly knows this, as being a fireman for 30 years. These are other photos that were there. You can see to the left, there's a photoshopped picture of the river, of the tidal ditch, showing a substantial water flow, which it looks like to be about 7,000 gallons, 700,000 gallons, between 200 and 700,000 gallons a day. But in reality, the river ditch to the right, at low tide, there is no sizable or significant water flow except from the major water sources, which is an outflow from a koi pond and a drainage pipe, that's about an 18-foot drainage pipe at the end of.
Thank you very much, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next presenter. Are there any questions from counsel at this time? All right, hearing none. Next presenter, please.
All right, thank you. And if I could have some help from electrons on the third floor, I can see myself, but I can't see counsel. Is that the way this is generally going to be?
Can you, you don't see us on the screen?
Okay, now I can see you in that, in that bottom screen. Yes, thank you so much.
Go ahead.
Daryl McAtire, Phelps Dunbar, LLP, 100 South Ashley Boulevard, Suite 2000 Tampa, Florida, representing Michael Gonzalez, who's the appellant. I'm sorry, not the appellant, he is the petitioner, I'm sorry. He is the opponent to the appeal in this case. We've got two of them, they're very interrelated. Much of what, and to that point, much of what you just heard was not relevant to this particular case. You just had a 60-plus-page PowerPoint, some of which had some slander in it, that had nothing to do with the fact that these are major violations of the required city building setbacks. Here's what is important. Mr. Murphy must meet all six factors of section 2760 the staff is required to consider. In the code, it says the word "and" after each sentence, A through F. You don't get to pick and choose which ones you meet, you have to meet all of them. Mr. Murphy, per the warranty deed, which is a record, purchased this property in 2010 and proceeded to start building in the setbacks, and constructing things in the setbacks, and constructing a second driveway, which, part of which has been removed without any harm to the property. Some of it still remains, which is the subject of our issue today. And if I could have the overhead projector activated, great. I've just put the decision later on so that the factors are, the A through F factors are visible while I'm speaking. But again, these improvements were constructed after Mr. Murphy purchased the property in 2010. This is a self-imposed hardship. He broke the law, hid in the corner, and hoped that he wouldn't get caught for years, was finally cited, and only took corrective action after he was cited in 2019, twice. The fact that it took years for the violation to be discovered, as he notes in his PowerPoint himself, should not be a factor in his favor. The general welfare of the public is exactly what is at stake here, as I'm talking about factor A. If the structure is allowed to remain, you'll have hundreds more violations mimicking it. I'm not talking about structures in backyards, where this might well belong. I'm talking about structures in the narrow side yard, diminutive side yard setbacks. The requested encroachment into the front yard setback is inconsistent with every city law and policy related to or governing the site. And I'll get to more of that as we go through the factors. The same issue with regard to the requested complete elimination, these aren't reduced. He has eliminated the building setbacks. Look at staff's report tonight, in the last line, says such a request is not minor in its impact. Those words have meaning. The whole idea of these design exceptions is to give a little bit of elasticity, elasticity to the code, so that if there is something that goes a little bit one way or the other and is not major, well, maybe we can all live with it. This is not minor. Staff agrees, we certainly agree with that. Factor B in 2760, that the exception provides a reasonable allowance of use under the specified circumstances of each application. There is no reasonable allowance of a use that results in a 35-foot incursion into the front yard setback, followed by other members of the neighborhood, and a complete elimination of building setbacks. So I'm sorry, that's, there's actually additional reduction in setback. But the point is, these are major incursions into the setbacks. And the appealed design exception would be inconsistent with the following policies of the City of Tampa Conference of Plan. The Conference of Plan states in its introduction on page eight, in a successful city building, everything is interconnected in context to everything else. A conference of plan is supposed to be a general guide to do just that. One component of the plan cannot be viewed singularly without taking all facets of the plan into consideration. That is the nature and intent of a comp plan. In other words, the intent of the conference of plan is consistency, harmony, and compliance with all regulations, not just those that are convenient. Mr. Murphy erroneously cites convenience as a factor for this accessory building. Land use policy 1.2.3, relate new buildings and development to the context of the neighborhood and community. In this community, buildings like, structures like this do exist, but they're in the backyard. They're not illegally jammed into the side of the house and into the side yard setback and then hidden for eight years until they finally get popped by code enforcement, and then we wind up where we are tonight. Land use policy 1.2.16, promote physical environments of the highest quality, which emphasize the special identity of each of the city's neighborhoods. This is not the highest quality. This is jam whatever I can get the cheapest into my yard in the wrong spot. And that's what he did. This, if it belongs anywhere, and it's up to counsel, it belongs in the backyard. He's got plenty of room back there. It's a large lot, is larger than the other lots in the, in the Platted subdivision, in part probably because the creek was there. But he complains he has some sort of hardship because his lot is irregular shape. Yeah, it's a regular shape, it's bigger than everybody else's on his side of the street. Mr. Murphy's points regarding how the building improves his life are not relevant to the conference of plan. He has presented no evidence that he has enhanced his home value, as stated in his PowerPoint, or the value of other homes. It's more likely that the illegal building actually diminishes the value of the neighborhood, and it's unsafe. So we'll move on to factor D. The exception is a minimum possible exception under specific circumstances. There, I mean, this, some of these are like arguing that the sky is blue. It is blue, you know? An inconsistent accessory structure, building constructed without a permit, which encroaches deep into the front yard setback and eliminates structural setbacks to zero, cannot give you an exception under the design exceptions. That's not what these are for. This is not elasticity of the code, this is not a little bit of a break for somebody who has a minor infringement, a minor problem. This is, this is major construction done on the quiet that is now illegal, and he got caught, and again, we're here tonight. Factor E, the approval of the exception of standards includes conditions of approval as necessary to ensure that the adjustment granted does not constitute a special approval. There was no approval, there was a denial. The denial was justified for the reasons stated, as I've stated herein, and for the reasons stated by staff. We do agree with staff. The accessory building was constructed and installed with complete, not just some disregard for the code, complete disregard for the code. Even after city code enforcement issued citations in 2019, the carport building was not removed and relocated, as he could have easily do. These things are not, these things are aluminum, they're light. He could have moved it. He didn't, he wanted to have his hearings. The fact that there are multiple properties that might also be in violation somewhere else in Seminole Heights, that isn't the point. That's not a hardship, just because somebody else is guilty down the street, we'll deal with them later as well. It's just the fact that we focus on this site and this illegal side yard setback violation, this major encroachment into the setback. Finally, factor F, the exception is consistent with any applicable specific plans in place for the subject property. There's nothing, this is in no way consistent with the Seminole Heights overlay, which is to protect the historic Seminole Heights neighborhood and the character of that neighborhood. Nowhere does it say that you can go in, ignore the building setbacks, ignore, and do major infringement into the front yard setback with a carport. And somehow, that's historic and in a theme with the, with the preservation of old Seminole Heights, or not, of the Seminole Heights overlay. Staff noted in its, in its denial letter that the development does not enhance the Seminole Heights Design District. Staff said that. That's competent substantial evidence you should consider. Your own staff's opinion is competent substantial evidence under the law. It also, the structure also does not match any aesthetic of the home. It's an aftermarket purchase. The idea that this is somehow tied to the aesthetic of Seminole Heights is absolutely absurd. It's something you buy at Home Depot, assemble, and bolt to the, bolt to the ground, and can be disassembled just as easily. So in conclusion, as to this structure, and we'll be back, there were a lot of things in that PowerPoint about, that go into case 20-148. I'm trying not to mix it, too. There's no competent substantial evidence to support overturning staff. Staff's approval gives you all, staff's denial, excuse me, staff's denial and the evidence in that letter and what I've said tonight give you everything you need to uphold the denial. Staff's decision should be upheld, and the appeal should be denied. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments?
I would like to confirm my client very briefly.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
Okay. We're all right. Is this counsel okay? Do you have any questions?
Any questions or comments? If not, we'll go to public comment. All right, is there anybody in the?
Mr. Chairman, I believe we're at number six.
No, we, no, we've already, we've heard both sides of the argument.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
It's been a long day, absolutely.
Do we have anybody for public comment at this time? You have three minutes to speak. And we're going to sanitize the lectern after each speaker for everyone's safety. Yes, ma'am?
We have two, we have two people in the audience who would like to speak on this item.
Very good. If you'd like to speak, please approach the lectern at this time. And if you haven't been sworn in, I believe we swore in everybody, but just in case we will swear you in. We're good, okay? Yes, sir, he was sworn in? Please state your name, sir. You have three minutes.
Aaron Murphy. I am Joe Murphy's son, and I'm here to talk about my sons, Aaron and McGuire. They really enjoy going to their grandfather's house, and, you know, outside his side yard, the side setback where they're focusing on, is where the tidal ditch lies, and it's the only little bit of existing nature in the neighborhood and on his property. His property actually extends, I'm a professional survey additionally, his property surveys extends approximately 20 feet into that ditch. So if you could take a side setback from So if you could take a side setback from his physical property line, it would be a completely different story. But you're taking it from a top of bank of the 20 feet that was taken away from his property by said tidal ditch. They really enjoy being outside. They really enjoy the nature, having a covered structure there so they can stay out of the heat, out of the rain, out of the elements while they play outside is a very good thing for my kids. So I just wanted to make sure everyone knew that before we talk about cheapness of structures and something maybe from Home Depot, except this wasn't, it was designed by an engineer. It has signed engineering design plans and wind mitigation forms, which is not what you would get from a cheapo $99 Home Depot type deal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, next speaker, please. Yes, ma'am, go ahead, please state your name.
My name is Suzanne Stennett. I have lived at the property at 6915 North River Boulevard for about approximately eight years. The structure was there at the beginning. I have not seen any damage to the area caused by the structure. Any, the structure is very, is hardly visible when you come down the street. It is, does provide us with an area to relax alongside the ditch area where there is vegetation and wildlife that we have seen manatees at higher tides, that it is enjoyable to see that that is there and there has been no damage caused by any of the structures that are on the, on the lot. And that was, that has been my absurd, observation over the past eight years. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, do we have any additional comments by staff, from staff?
Mr. Chairman, this is Kate Wells for the record, just one comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. McEachran, his presentation made a reference that this is a self-imposed hardship. I just wanted to clarify for the record that the item before you is not based upon a variance where typically you are dealing with the concept of hardship. And instead, this is before you based upon an appeal from a denial of a design exception. So the criteria in section 27-60 would apply and the concept of a self-imposed hardship is not relevant. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We now go to rebuttal from the applicant. I believe the gentleman is at the lectern, yes?
Yes.
Wait, before you begin, Councilman Dingfelter, yes? Dingfelter.
Right, we've been instructed to ask questions before revol. So, so I have a few. Mr. Cotton?
Yes, sir.
To the best of your knowledge, wherever, were any building permits and/or any other types of city permissions sought or granted for this when it was originally constructed?
No, sir, my understanding it was installed without, without any building permits.
Is this the type of structure that typically would require building permits?
That's my understanding. I don't work in the permitting office, so I don't want to state anything that's not correct, but that is my understanding.
If, if the, if the homeowner, whoever put this up, I don't know if it was this homeowner or the predecessor, had sought building permits, would the side setback or the, or the wetland setback issues have been addressed at that time?
They should have been, yes.
So in a typical, in a typical scenario, seeking a building permit would trigger a site plan review and a zoning review, correct?
Correct. The zoning, zoning and site plan review are done by the permitting office. The zoning office only is included if there's questions coming for us. A different clarification, I know Mr. Murphy indicated that it was attached to the building. His application, which is what I was looking at during the presentations, specifically states for a detached structure. So there's nothing in staff's understanding that this was physically attached to the building.
Would it have made a difference in, in the evaluation of the case?
Well, the setbacks would have been different because it would have, if it was attached to the building, it was just an extension and the building department would have considered it as one structure. If it was truly, truly just one structure, then the setbacks would be different. The front would be based on a build-to-lin as in Seminole Heights and the side would have been seven feet. There would be no building separation. But as far, from the zoning side of looking at this and looking at the definitions of accessory structure, zoning still would consider this to be an accessory structure. It's clearly subordinate to the main use of the property, which is a single-family home, and the main structure, which is a single-family house.
So would it still have been in, in violation and still would have required a design exception under that, under that other scenario of detached?
Well, detached is what it was considered for. As attached, it probably would have met, yes, sir.
I got it backwards.
Okay.
If it, if it had come in as attached, would we still be here today? Would they, would they be required to seek a design exception?
I would have to look at the site plan again. I believe they would have met the required setbacks of to have the build-to-line in the side yard. I have to look at the site plan. I'm panicked, I can't answer that. Let me open it up.
You probably should resolve some of that.
But even on the site plan, the site plan, it shows it as seven foot, well, on the site plan, because the property goes to the other side of the bank or into the, into the wetland, into the, the stream or whatever that tidal ditch is. So he would have met the required side yard and probably the front yard.
How about the wetlands setback?
That's a separate case, I'm not sure if we should discuss that yet or not. No.
We haven't, we haven't joined those cases together?
No, the, the petitioners in each case asked that the presentations be separated, so we honored that request and did not combine them.
So Ms. Wells, procedurally, where does that leave us? It appears that the petitioner's testimony and his, and at least one of his pictures show attached, his application is detached. There seems to be a little bit of, seems to throw things up in the air a little bit.
Yeah, that's certainly new information for staff. I guess my question for Mr. Cotton would be, given what was presented, would staff consider that an attached structure for purposes of the setbacks?
Um, I was looking at the definitions of principal structure, which would be the single-family home, and an accessory structure, which is a subordinate structure, they just use the term detached from, but located on the same lot as a principal structure, the use of which is incidental accessory to the principal structure. Even though it's attached, it's attached through the way it's, I guess, mounted to the sidewall, based on those photos, I don't think it's an attached structure, it's not, it's still, it would still be considered accessory structure by the zoning administrator.
So I guess in conclusion of these questions, do either one of you, Mr. Cotton or Ms. Wells, feel that a remand on that issue would be appropriate to take a closer look at it and make sure everybody's on the same page and possibly rewrite the, rewrite the opinion? I'm not sure. I'm just throwing that out as a possibility.
Interesting concept, the remand would be to staff since this is a decision of the zoning administrator and not of the variance review board. I don't mean to put Mr. Cotton on the spot, but, you know, unless there are details that have come out during today's hearing that would change the analysis, change the setback requirements, I don't know that a remand would result in a different opinion. And from what I'm hearing from Mr. Cotton, the, the fact that the carport is attached with, I'm going to use a very non-technical term, what appears to be brackets, but the way it's attached, that he would not consider that to be an attached structure for purposes of the setbacks that would otherwise apply. And that would be different than those that are being requested here.
Correct. You concur?
Yes, sir, I would agree with Ms. Wells.
All right, well, thanks for the clarifications. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Sir, you have five minutes for your rebuttal?
Yeah, I have to disagree with Mr. Cotton. The, we have engineered plans that show the attachment and it is properly attached accordingly. There are two, when it comes to accessory structures, there's detached and attached. So given this situation, it is attached and therefore it would come under the setback rules for the contemporary modern building form and it would allow for the structure to be installed up to the front facade of the building as well as have a zero setback on the side of the house. So Mr. Cotton, I believe, is, is not correct in his statement that it is indeed an attached garage. Secondly, this, this is only the setback requirement, has nothing to do with the, the wetlands. It should be noted that the property structure does add value. I am assessed at $10,000 on the property. And secondly, whenever I would go to sell it, it would bring a substantial amount of value to the home for individuals who are looking for the additional storage. This, this property was improved over the years and as a result, the, the carport or garage or whatever was there was enclosed in eliminating storage as well as, you know, any type of onsite parking as well that is granted by chapter 27-290 so that we can park our cars anywhere on the property as long as they're properly registered. So I have to disagree with Mr. Cotton. I believe that when you look at the property, it is not causing any, it has met all of the requirements of A through F and that if properly applied, the outcome would be an approval of the structure and would be approved in place and as is. The, the reported infraction was by Mr. Gonzalez. However, the, I went back in to do a permit after the fact and I have submitted all the plans to building and we've been approved by transportation, building, zoning and natural resources. The only one that basically denied was the urban design, but when you look at the properties surrounding the area, you look at Seminole Heights, this is a typical structure that you find throughout the area. They're all attached, they're attached by some type of a brace and they are on legs, steel legs, similar to what is the, the structure is built on. So as far as I can see, there is consistency in this structure and it does indeed conform to the Seminole Heights overlay and the properties that are within Seminole Heights. We're not talking the historic Seminole Heights, we're talking the other areas of Seminole Heights in the northwest, the northeast and the southwest sections. Only in the central and some of the north, the southeastern sections do you find the, the bungalows, the craftsmen's and things like this. That's why there's a delineation in the different types of building forms. So I think, you know, I think we have to look at this and, and differently than what Mr. Cotton's doing, he's looking at it awfully narrow-mindedly and saying, oh, it's not attached. But it's clearly attached when you look at the, the renderings and you look at the, the engineered report as well.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilmember Goode.
Sir, you said that, that structure has been there about nine years, did I hear that correctly?
Who are you talking to?
You, sir.
I, I'm sorry, what was the question again?
I thought I heard you said the structure was built up since about nine years.
It has been in place for nine years, that is correct.
And I heard you say that when it went up nine years ago, you had construction designs, you had a company come out and do all this, did they get permits at that time?
That's correct. The, the, the structure itself is designed by a company called Carolina Carports. They basically design and these structures and submit them through the different, you know, zoning boards, building codes, so on and so forth, to make sure that it does meet the, the various codes. And in this situation, if it went before the building, which it already has and was approved, the attached structure would be approved by building department.
So is your recollection, you believe that the company that you utilize submitted the designs and plans for permitting? Is that company still available? Do you have any documents showing that they went through the city's permit?
Yes, yeah, the, the permitting that was submitted were all the plans for the, the structure and they were submitted to the building department and approved. The, the site was also approved by transportation. The, the site was also approved by natural resources, that there is no degradation to the foliage or any aspect of the, the tidal ditch there in the wetland.
Mr. Cotton, Mr. Cotton?
Yes, sir.
And you, in our archives, our files have no documents of this being approved?
That is correct. There's currently a building permit in-house right now. It's BLD 190468681 for a carport. It was applied for on July 17, 2019. And in that, in that building application, it is for a, I'm waiting for a sell-up. After the fact, carport patio to address a violation under the code enforcement case that started this, started the ball rolling on all this, it is for an aluminum side room carport. There is a comment that was placed in here, I'm not sure by whom, that says, carport is freestanding and not attached to the house, no FEMA documentation required.
So nine years ago?
The building department, I'm not sure what that actually means, but it sounds like the building was looking at as a detached structure, so at the time it was applied for FEMA rules wouldn't apply.
So we may have some discrepancies here.
Well.
Yes, sir.
May I speak or not?
Thank you very much. Councilman Citro?
Thank you very much. Mr. Cotton, please define attached. I think, I think we're getting some mixed messages about attached. Apparently this is an eve-to-eve separation that, that you're talking about?
Correct. When, when it was first applied for the, applicant applied for a detached structure. I don't recall, and it could be, I did not review the original record, so it may be in the original record that it shows it's attached to the structure. But attached normally means they share a roof. So like if you're doing, doing a detached structure, you're allowed to have an open breezeway between the two, but if it was, if it is attached to the building as, as is being claimed right now, and that's what he's being permitted for, this permit needs to be revised to reflect the fact that it's attached. And I don't know if that will kick FEMA rules in or not, but just based on the comment that's in the system, it sounds like FEMA rules would apply. And that's something, again, I'm not in the building department, I'm not a certified flood manager, so I can't, I'm not going to, I can only mention that, I can't really comment anymore than that.
And usually this breezeway is a five-foot separation between eve and eve, correct?
Well, no, in Seminole Heights, it's a three-foot eve to eve, a five-foot building to building.
Regardless, it's more than the one foot that is there now. Just because there might be some hurricane straps or whatever, holding a structure to another, that doesn't define attached. And, and I think that's where the discrepancy is here. Thank you, Mr. Cotton, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Goode.
Thank you for your indulgence, Mr. Chair. Mr. Cotton, would you be amenable, because I, I mean, I've got some concerns that we, about information, in your own words, you're stating that the building construction, you, you don't have information from them. So would there be a problem with, we continuing until we get this information? Because I, I mean, I don't, I want to make sure I'm fair to the homeowner and also look and make sure where the city's protecting the code as well.
Well, I think the issue is being what's, what was submitted to the building department is whether or not it's attached or detached. I'm looking at the building plans and I'll be honest with you, I'm not an expert in that. What's in the system right now looks like a freestanding structure and what has been, what the commissar based, what's in the Acela system for that building permit, it sounds like it was supposed to be a freestanding structure. That's what this permit was applied for. So I mean, Mr. Murphy would have to go ahead and amend his building application, then we would take it, if he's going to make the claim as an attached structure, then we'd have to evaluate it under that process. I'm not sure it would be up to Mr. Murphy, I guess if he wants to see what council's determination would be as a detached structure or he wants to, I guess, ask for a remand and come back and change what he's submitted for his building permit and have us look at it as a, as part of the attached structure.
I think what Mr. Dingfelter was going with, thank you, sir, for your comments.
Thank you very. Councilman Citro?
One last question then. Mr. Cotton, to the best of your abilities and with your knowledge of being with the city for as many years as you've been, had, if this structure wasn't here today and if the applicant went down there and said, this is the way I want to build it, this way, right now, as it stands, would that be? way, right now, as it stands," would that be permitted?
As it stands, as originally...
As it is built now. Would it be permitted?
No.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much, Mr. Cotton.
If there's no other questions or comments, may I have a motion to close this public hearing?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I just want to give Mr. Murphy maybe a short, brief closing to address the comments that we just made.
Again, it is attached. Mr. Cotton is kind of off-base here. He even said that, I could actually ask for a remand to adjust the permit accordingly. I am not a builder, and I am not a construction person. This was a structure that seemed to fit the bold, and as a result, it was purchased, and it was installed by a third party, the manufacturer. So, if there is a question with regard to attachment, I think that I should go, be allowed to go back, amend the permit, and then come back to City Council as an attached structure, as opposed to trying to question whether or not it's attached or detached right now. Because I think there's too many questions with regard to that. And I think that it should be, I should be allowed to go back and, you know, properly state and submit accordingly. Because to me, I don't know, I, you know, to me, it was a freestanding. But then again, with it being attached, after reading the code and understanding the code, it is attached. So, I would request that if we, I would be able to remand and amend the permit, and then come back and address the City Council at a later date.
All right, can I get a motion then to close?
I'm sorry.
Yes?
Question.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Dingfelder.
Sir, sir, the only thing that bothers me, I think I heard two different answers on this issue about, about permits, okay? Mr. Cotton clearly indicated that you have one single pending building permit has not been approved yet on this structure. You seem to allude to some notion that eight or nine years ago, there was a building permit that had been approved. And you can correct me if I misunderstood what you were saying, but I just wanted to get some clarification on that, because that discrepancy between those two bothers me a little bit.
Okay. There was no initial permit back in 2011. I didn't realize and understand that there was a permit required for this type of structure. So, as a result, whenever it was reported, I came in and did a permit after the fact, and submitted all the necessary documents to obtain a permit. But unfortunately, we have...
That was my question, because there seemed to be a little confusion on that. I appreciate the clarification.
Thank you very much. Councilman Miranda.
Thank you, Chairman. From what I gathered, from what listened to the conversation, Mr. Cotton clearly stated that an attached structure is attached at the roof. In other words, many homes and many other things that obviously attach. You don't put a carport. Most carports are attached in one mannerism or another to the roof. In other words, a roof comes, and this may be in the slant, a 312 or whatever, and then the attachment is done in a mannerism to the house, that is attached. When it's roofline to roofline, it is attached. From a little, quite not understanding all the facts, this one, from where the pictures that are sold, is attached by a bolt, not in the roofline. There's a separation between this roofline of the house and this roofline of the apartment structure. And there is no connection other than a bolt to the house.
Well, it's not a bolt, it's just not a bolt, it's actual engineered and structural connections.
Well, but my question is, it may not be a bolt, it may be structural engineered, but it's tied with a bolt. Am I correct or not?
It's tied with a structural connection.
Correct.
That's correct, that is engineered. And as far as the discrepancy between the rooflines, that is, in the code, it even states that it doesn't have to be attached to the roof. It doesn't have to be under the same roofline. So, you know, given that part of the code, what you're saying is not necessarily correct entirely.
Well, everything you say was correct.
What?
Whatever you call us, 100% correct, right?
I'm saying that it doesn't have to be connected to the roofline. It just has to be connected to the, the structure, the primary structure, and provide for proper drainage of the runoff from the building roof, the primary roof, and into the, onto the roof of the accessory structure, which is attached.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
We have a motion to close for Councilman Citro.
Question.
Second.
Question by Councilman Dingfelder, a discussion on the motion?
Oh, my goodness. Councilman Dingfelder, yes, sir. You're muted, sir. Please unmute yourself.
Thank you, Mr. Shelby, and Mr. Chairman. Question to legal before we close. Kate, do you have any advice, based upon everything we've heard, in regard to us going forward with a motion, to a motion up or down on this petition? Or do you suggest a remand based upon everything you've heard? Because I know we always want the cleanest record possible.
I think there's perhaps two options here, given the testimony that has been provided, and the questions surrounding whether the method of installation would constitute an attached or a detached structure. When I look at the definition of accessory structure in the code, it says, "Structure accessory, a subordinate structure detached from but located on the same lot as the principal structure, the use of which is incidental and accessory to that of the principal structure." So, when we look at the accessory structure setbacks, the, based on this definition, the structure itself must be detached. And I think there's question right now as to whether the method of installation would allow this to be considered a detached structure, that would have to comply with accessory structure setbacks, or whether it's attached and would otherwise have to comply with principal structure setbacks, which would put us in a very different situation. So, a couple of options, I think we could either remand this back to Mr. Cotton for consideration of that additional information, and if it would result in a different outcome, or possibly a continuance, to allow staff to look at that issue and report back to council at a future date. I think either path would allow consideration of the unique circumstances that have presented themselves this evening.
If I can, this is Martin Shelby, Ms. Wells. Procedurally, a continuance would be to a date and time certain. Would a remand require some additional process and time to be able to have it come back to council, as opposed to a continuance?
Good point, yes. With the remand, you know, with the, with additional information, Mr. Cotton would then, the intent would be for Mr. Cotton to render another opinion, that in and of itself could start a process all over again, depending on the outcome, and whether Mr. Murphy or the neighbor would then appeal that decision back to City Council. A continuance, like you noted, it would be to a date certain, and wouldn't require any re-noticing. It would allow staff to report back to council on whether the analysis included in the original zoning administrator's determination still stands, or whether they would look at it differently, and there would no longer be an issue with the setbacks as it relates to that relief that was being requested through this design exception.
Yes, sir, Councilman Dingfelder, yes, sir.
In light of the wise, sage advice from legal counsel, both of our legal counsel, I would, I think the safe, the safe way to go on this is to, is to continue the matter. I believe the petitioner was amenable to continuing. I regret and apologize to the, to the other folks involved about that, but I don't think they get a choice. So, I'd move to continue this for approximately 60 days, to allow staff to totally research all the issues that have arisen, especially as related to attached versus detached, and side yard setbacks, et cetera.
Okay.
If we could, in order to not have to re-notice, Mr. Shelby, if you could help me with the hearing that would fall within that 60-day period?
The, I, April 22 at 6:00 p.m., which is a Thursday evening.
So moved.
We have a motion from Councilman Dingfelder?
I guess we should ask the gentleman to make sure that he confirms what the continuance incurs.
Mr. Murphy?
It would be dependent on my access to the Construction Services Department, and Mr. Cotton, and other people there who will be involved with the permitting process.
Well, this isn't, we're not a permitting yet, but...
If this is given some type of priority, 60 days probably will work, if not 90 days would probably be the max.
Question for staff, then, that's a question for staff. Is 60 days sufficient for you, Mr. Cotton, on the basis of a continuance, to be able to present the additional evidence to council, or determination that may change the process, the procedure?
Yeah, 60 days should be fine. I'm, you know, tomorrow, I need to check with the plans reviewer who's reviewing the building plan, to see why they made that determination it was detached. If the plans, I don't think the plans that are in Acela are matched, mismatched with the plans that were shown tonight. And I think that might be one of the issues that's having a problem. So, I said, I think the coordination has to be done by the applicant, by, Mr. Murphy needs to submit the accurate plans that he's, that he showed tonight, if that is attached, and let the Building Department review that, that packet, so then we can make a determination whether or not, under the zoning, that we reconsider to be attached or detached.
All right, in light of all that, and some hesitation from the petitioner, and this thing's been around for nine years, how about 90 days, Mr. Shelby, what would that take us to, May?
90 days would take you to May 27 at 6:00 p.m. a Thursday night.
So moved.
We have a motion from Councilman Dingfelder, any interruptions? Do we have a second?
Okay.
We have a second from Councilman Miranda, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
And also, a notice to, to the aggrieved person, the property owner, who testified that this is the notice that you would be getting, there'd be no additional notice. So, again, the date is May 27, Thursday, May 27, 6:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, counsel.
Next up, item number nine. And I believe we've sworn in, everybody involved, it's some of the same individuals. Item number nine.
Mr. Chairman, before we get started on that, procedurally, if it's the same, if some of the same issues are wrapped up, I don't know if the, if this can go forward, or should it wait? I don't know.
I agree.
Are these issues, are these issues problematic, Mr. Cotton, in terms of the new evidence, the new information we've heard?
Um, I'll let Ms. Wells correct me, but I don't, I don't think they are interdependent, but this, this request is strictly for an approval into the wetland setback. Depending upon council's actions tonight, would affect what happens for the accessory structure, or main structure, whichever it may end up being, that was, that is going to be going through the permitting office. Because this request is...
Whose petition is this? This is the neighbor's petition?
Yes, sir.
And, so maybe we need to ask the neighbor if they'd like a continuance, so that we can do it all at the same night.
Daryl McAtier for...
The microphone on...
Can the counsel hear me? Thank you.
There we go.
I tend to agree with Mr. Cotton. The wetland setback issue is a different issue than the accessory. It's the reason to Ms. Wells's point, that, especially since it got, you know, the decisions were rendered separately months ago, that we asked that they, they stay separate, when we discussed it, I think on Monday or Friday, doesn't matter, because they are different questions. Now, we're talking about, more about, honestly, about the concrete, what's left of the concrete, because a lot, he was already forced to take out the first two-thirds of the driveway, the second driveway. So, now we're talking about the concrete, we're talking about a different animal. Are there intertwined issues? Yes.
Before we start getting to the merits of the case and the application, I think the question was whether your client would be receptive to continuing the case, to be considered at the same time as the other application, or whether you want to move forward this evening.
Well, I, let me, I thought he said move forward, but let me confer with him, because the masking thing, I want to make sure I'm understanding my client, so. My client has asked if the city is so inclined that we'd like to move forward with 148.
All right, go ahead.
All right, again, Daryl McAtier, Phillips Stone Bar LLP.
If I may make the initial presentation, Mr. McAtier?
I apologize, go ahead.
Thank you. In that way, following me and then staff can make their presentation, following the same format that we did with the previous case. Mr. Chairman, members of council, for the record, I'm Kate Wells, Chief Assistant City Attorney. The item before you is a petition filed by Michael and Terry Gonzalez, the owners of property located at 6916 North River Boulevard, which is within 250 feet of Mr. Murphy's property, located at 6915 River Boulevard. Mr. and Mrs. Gonzalez are seeking review of the Natural Resources Coordinator's decision approving the design exception filed by Mr. Murphy, seeking relief from Section 27-286, entitled Wetlands Protection and Buffer. Earlier today, council was provided with a copy of the hearing procedures for today's review, as well as sample motions. In addition, you have been provided with a copy of the review criteria in Section 27-60, subsection E.5. Similar to the process followed for item eight, City Council will apply a de novo standard of review, and your decision is not limited to the record created by the Natural Resources Coordinator. Instead, you can take public testimony, accept new evidence, and make a decision based upon the application meeting the criteria in Section 27-60, subsection E.5. Eric Cotton will provide an overview of the relief requested in the application and the basis for the city's decision. After considering all of the evidence introduced into the record of tonight's hearing, City Council may uphold the city's decision, and thereby approve the application for design exception, or council may overturn the city's decision, and thereby deny the application for design exception. With that, I will turn the presentation over to Mr. Cotton, and I remain available to answer any questions.
Ms. Wells, I'm sorry, I, I don't know if it's too late to do this, but my client, after considering kind of the broader issues, has asked if we could continue these issues to May 27 and hear them together.
All right. If that is your wish, so we can, we can entertain a motion to continue for 90 days to meet the same date as the previous item, correct?
That would be, Mr. Chairman, again, as council stated, Thursday, May 27 at 6:00 p.m.
Is that correct, sir?
That was our request to May 27. Yes, sir.
We have a motion for Councilman Goode, if Councilman Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Thank you very much, we'll see you in 90 days. I know. I know. All right, next up, item number 10 cannot be heard. There's an email from Mr. Michelini, the applicant's representative, requesting to reschedule hearing to a date in mid to late April. I'm going to look at the calendar real quick. We are looking at, in April...
Mr. Chairman, I believe, and I can ask Ms. Wells, I believe this being a VRB review hearing, and it has to be... and it has to be noticed, is this one of those that would now then go to a daytime meeting, Ms. Wells?
I will defer to you, Mr. Shelby, on whether our review hearings are scheduled during the daytime.
I believe, I believe that was the pleasure of counsel, and I don't have that documentation in front of me.
Well, let's, we have April first and April fifteenth of the regular city council meetings, and we can place that on the agenda.
Let me take a look at the calendar and just take a look.
We have two review hearings on the first at ten-thirty A.M., and on the fifteenth, I don't see any review hearings scheduled during the daytime meeting.
Would you like, then, the fifteenth, then, or do you want to schedule three for the April first? April first, I think, yeah, whichever counsel wishes.
I would say April fifteenth, what do you, what do you all think?
I believe Mr. Michelini was requesting a date either in the mid to late April, so I think April fifteenth would, would fall within that timeframe.
Yeah, because that is going to be the, the last regular meeting in April, if not, it goes into May. So we'll go with April fifteenth, can I get a motion to continue this or reschedule this?
Reschedule, and the time would be ten-thirty A.M., I believe?
Ten-thirty A.M. to reschedule, item number ten, V.R.B. twenty dash fifty-two dash C, April fifteenth. We have a motion? Motion for Councilman Goose, do we have a second? Second for Councilman Carlson, all in favor? Aye. Okay, we now go to item number eleven, we have three alcoholic beverage hearings this evening, I see Mr. Grandolph.
Yes, sir.
All right, if you would please raise your right hand, so we can swear you in, do you have anybody else with you this evening?
Yes, we've been sworn, Mr. Chairman, my client and myself.
Okay, very good, then, you're all good to go, thank you very much. All right, we'll begin with item number eleven.
Um, yes, counsel, um, good evening, Chairman and counsel, it's LaShawn Doc with Development Coordination. I will present the alcohol cases for you this evening, and if I may, if I could share my screen, please?
Okay, we can see it, go ahead.
Okay, thank you again, this is item, this is, the next item on the agenda is AB two-two-one-oh-three, it's for the property located at two-thirty-six North Del Mayberry Highway. The applicant is being represented by John Grandolph.
I mean, it's shape showing, but I'm sharing.
The request is for a small venue classification for beer, wine, and liquor, is packaged sales, off-premise consumption only. The A.B. sales area proposed contains nine-thousand-nine-hundred-and-thirty-two square feet, that is a total square footage for indoor area only. The parking required is forty spaces, the parking provided is forty-three spaces. The sales hours are consistent with chapter fourteen. The applicant is proposing the use as retail sales shoppers' goods, this is not considered a change of use. The subject property is located in the West Shore Business Center, and distance separation requirement is two-hundred-and-fifty feet from residential uses. One waiver has been requested, that is a waiver to reduce the distance separation to residential to a hundred-and-thirty-eight feet. This is the site plan submitted, the site is located on the southwest corner of Del Mayberry. You can see Del Mayberry Highway loaded, located here, east of the building, and then to the north is West Fig Street. I have a close-up view of the site plan, I can show you. So this is the subject site, and this is the building that is outlined in this whole black line. This is the nine-thousand-nine-hundred-and-thirty-two square feet proposed for the A.B. sales area. This is Del Mayberry Highway on the east, on the north is West Fig Street. The parking is located west of the building, so access to the site is on Fig Street, here at this point. This is an aerial of the site, so the site is identified in the red dotted line. And just to orient you on this aerial, this is Del Mayberry Highway on the east, this is Fig Street, north of the site. So you can see the zoning along Del Mayberry is C.G. Commercial General. To the west of this site contains the R.S. fifty zoning district, and that contains the residential, single-family uses. So for this site specifically, the residential zoning is within the parking area, located on the west. So these are pictures of the site, the picture on the left is the subject site, that is the north view. The picture on the right is the subject site, it's the east view on Del Mayberry. The picture on the left is the view looking south on Del Mayberry. On the right side, the picture is the, is east of the site across Del Mayberry, the Village Inn. The development review and compliance staff has reviewed the application and finds it inconsistent. There are corrections required to be made to the site plan in between first and second reading. And counsel, this concludes my presentation, I am available if you have any questions.
Do we have any questions at this, Councilman Dingfelder?
Yes, sir.
Dingfelder, yes, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you, Ms. Doc, will you go back to probably your aerial that showed the adjacent homes? Yes?
Yes.
I don't know if you can zoom in on that at all, near the subject site? What I'm looking for, what I'm looking for is, you mentioned the, they're seeking a waiver of the, of the required distance to residential. So which, specifically, which, which residential is being arguably being touched by this? Where do you measure from, do you measure from the parking lot, or do you measure from the building, the, the structure itself?
It's from the actual property line, let me see what we have, the one-hundred-and-thirty-eight feet, so it's thirty-eight oh-seven North B Street. Let me go back to the aerial.
Looks like it'd be set... Well, if you're measuring from the property line, it looks like there'd be, am I, aren't I seeing quite a few single-family homes within the two-fifty off of those, those two corners?
If that is on Fig Street a residential use, then, yes, I'm not certain what this use is, let me take a look.
So you just identify a, one single home, but, but there might be more than one?
It looks like the distance that is being considered is for their homes on North B. But I can't speak specifically to this use that is here on Fig Street that I'm highlighting here, circling with the arrow.
Yeah, because typically, those are going to be fifty-foot lots, so if you're talking two-hundred-and-fifty feet, I would think it might be, you know, five lots back, five lots to the west.
Correct, that they're fifty-foot wide lots in that aerial.
Thank you.
I had to check the actual application and see what was submitted, as far as the survey.
Thank you very much.
So you'll get back to us a little later?
Yes, mhm, and the applicant may be able to clarify what's adjacent, but I can certainly take a look.
Thank you very much, any of the council members? All right, anybody else? Mr. Grandolph, sir?
Uh, yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the city council. My name is John Grandolph, my address is Suite thirty-seven-hundred Bank of America Plaza, and I have the pleasure of representing Big Town Liquors, which is, the operating company is Lukin's Liquors, which is, has quite a reputation in Pinellas County, and they seek to come over here and operate their second liquor store in Tampa, on Del Mayberry. I'm joined by Mr. Chris Jallow, who is with the family that operates this family-owned operation. And before I give my comments, I first want to compliment Ms. Doc's thorough review of the application and presentation to you, and to address Mr. Dingfelder's question. If I may, on this aerial photograph, the, to give you some, some reference, this is the Village Inn Pancake House. This is Donatello, this is the Donatello Parking Lot, this is the store that Chris is going to repurpose the rooms to go for kids, this is the parking lot of the store, property line, the, I think thirty-five oh-seven North B property is, is here. The code asks you, where is the closest residential use, that is the closest residential use, and that's the measurement that you're seeing from the property line to, to the house. So I trust that clarifies that issue. The finding is inconsistency, but that is a, a very minor finding, because we simply have two revisions to make on the site table, to list the hours of operation, and to remove a, a scribbler's error on the title. So that's the only finding of inconsistency. I submit to you that this is an excellent repurposing of an existing building that Chris is planning to do, there will not be any consumption of liquor outside, they have a stellar reputation in Pinellas County, and Chris is here this evening to answer any questions you may have. On page three, the code criteria is enunciated under section twenty-seven dash one-twenty-nine, and it is listed with the general conditions and all those specific conditions. I will submit to you that these general conditions and specific conditions are met, primarily the repurposing of the building for indoor retail sales. The waiver we required is the only waiver we're requiring on, on residential distance. We are consistent with the comprehensive plan R.M.U. one-hundred and R. ten, the only residential zoning piece is towards the end of the parking lot on Fig. It will not encourage a precedent or encourage a more intensive compatible, incompatible use in the surrounding area. This is Del Mayberry Highway, just north of Highway sixty, which is Kennedy Boulevard. Numerous commercial establishments up and down the road, this is where you cite a use of this, of this type and, and, and order. The...
Mr. Grandolph, can I ask you?
Yes.
Just to go back to that, to that aerial for a second?
Yes.
The, what I was, what I was asking this doc before was, was if you draw, you've got to draw a two-hundred-and-fifty-foot circle outside of the, the two corners, your two western corners, and, and if you did, do you have any idea how many, how many residential homes you would hit? That, that, that was my key question before, it looks like, it looks like you'd hit a few on North B and a few on Fig.
That's correct.
Is that not correct?
That's correct, all the way to, maybe not all the way to church, but yeah, that, that's, that circle is going to go probably like this.
Right, almost, almost a church.
Yeah.
And I know that, I know there's a smattering of, of office uses in there, but my recollection is, is there's a lot of residential there too, still.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you. I could provide to you the surrounding owner's search that we submitted with the clerk, if you'd like to see that, that's in the record.
I'm, I'm comfortable with your answer just now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I was going to talk about parking, the, the parking requirement is forty spaces, we've provided forty-three spaces. The remainder of the package that Ms. Doc prepared indicates the photographs will basically be repurposing the building, as I've stated earlier. You have a good citizen here, you are granting the privilege to this citizen, Chris is available to speak to you, and we respectfully request your approval this evening.
Thank you very much. All right, I can't see the kiosk, is there anybody here for public comment on item number eleven? Do we have anybody registered to speak? I see a Pamela Jo Hatley, who may be here in person, and I see another individual behind.
We have four people altogether, four more people to speak.
Four people here, okay.
And they've all been sworn in.
Very good, all right, we'll take the first speaker for public comment, please approach the lectern and state your name, you have three minutes.
I'm Pamela Jo Hatley, one-four-five-one-seven North Eighteenth Street. I represent Michael Palias, my client lives at thirty-eight-ten West Gray. Mr. Manis, or Councilman Maniscalco's legislative aide is, is passing out some documents that I want to submit into the record, there's an error in my statement, I referred to my client, Mr. Palias, as living at thirty-eight-ten West Fig, that's actually his son, I was mistaken, that's my error. His son lives at thirty-eight-ten West Fig and owns that home, it's directly adjacent to the parking lot. And the, this is the two-hundred-and-fifty-foot circle, so Mr. Palias, the son, his residence is right here. My client, Mr. Palias Senior, has a property here where he operates a childcare. There are also some other residences within that two-hundred-and-fifty-foot circle.
They're all sworn in?
Yeah. Okay.
All right, this is Mr. Palias, the son's property here. It is about one-hundred-and-eighty-five feet from the A.B. sales area, and the childcare center here, right across the parking lot, is about a hundred-and-fifty feet from the A.B. sales area. This, this will be a huge store that will draw a large clientele from a broad geographical base. There's no amount of screening or buffering that will protect this neighborhood from this use. The comprehensive plan at policy nine-point-three-point-six recognizes that establishments licensed to sell alcoholic beverages can have a deleterious effect on neighborhoods. The land use, the land development code does allow counsel to grant a waiver, but only if it finds the use will ensure the public health, safety, and welfare, and be compatible with contiguous and surrounding properties. This one will not, the scale and the intensity of this use does not ensure public health, safety, and welfare, and is not compatible and contiguous with surrounding properties. To the contrary, it will be an intensive disruptive force in this neighborhood, and especially to the Palias' properties. So we urge city council to deny the waiver and the special use request, and if I still have a moment, I would like to just show the photographs that I brought. This is Mr. Palias' son's home, this is the use right behind it. This is his home from the parking lot, this is his rooftop, and this is the childcare center, the view from the parking lot of the proposed use. And so, again, we urge the council to deny the waiver and deny the special use request.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're going to sanitize the lectern after each speaker for everyone's safety, and then we'll have the next speaker up. Thank you very much, next speaker, please state your name.
Michael Palias.
Say it again, sir, we didn't hear it.
Michael Palias.
Yes, sir.
How you doing?
Great, how are you?
Oh, not too bad. Can't see anybody.
No, we, we can see, you should be able to see the day, as it might be small on the screen, do you see the, no?
No.
We can, we can see you.
Okay.
Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I've lived in this neighborhood for over seventy years, and I invest in my life, my family, and my business in this area. And my concerns are, if they put a liquor store in there, venue, that it would just have a devastating effect on the, the property, the property value would drop, it would be less safe for my family to be out in the streets with the extra traffic and stuff going around, and besides, I have a daycare center there that there's constantly traffic going in and out, and with the extra traffic, if you put a, a liquor store there, the extra traffic from that liquor store will interfere with the traffic coming with the restaurant, as well as my business. And, it's just, it would affect my business in another way, too, is if a parent sees a liquor store across the street, it may not want to put their child at my center because of the liquor store, just because of, of the, of the nature of the business. And also, on that one corner of Del Mayberry and Fig Street, there's constantly, constant accidents there. I mean, there's hundreds of accidents every year there, you can check the records and see, just the other day, we had a turnover, and they hit that building, they hit the fire extinguisher there, I mean, the fire hydrant, and the constant traffic just in that one area, if you put another big business there... area. If you put another big business there, especially like a liquor store or something, it will interfere with the, the traffic flow of the, of the neighborhood. It just, it would destroy it completely. And I just hope you deny the, the request for the liquor store to be put there. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir.
I have a question for the gentleman.
Councilman Dingfelder, yes, sir.
I don't know if you can see me, sir.
I can see you.
Okay. The, obviously, the, the building has been there, and the parking lot has been there for quite a while, as, as a rooms-to-go, as a retail. The, the, this particular applicant is, is basically, I don't, doesn't look like they're changing much of anything. They probably put a different sign out, changed the interior, but from an exterior perspective, it probably stays the same in terms of the building and the parking lot. So can you testify, you know, from your perspective, as property owner, you and your family, what's the difference? It's already, it's already been a retail use. So what, what's, what's the difference in terms of the proposed alcohol use?
My concern is that if they go in there, let's say they buy some liquor, and they go out of the parking lot, and they decide to take a few sip of the liquor, and they decide to go out on the street and make a left-hand turn and go down my street, and there's a lot of people walking, their children and the dogs and stuff. I mean, this is a, a young neighborhood, and a lot of people walking their animals, and they're running and stuff like that. And with the extra traffic coming off of the, that by, by the alcohol sales and stuff, that it would cause a major, I just hope it, it doesn't happen, because I hate to see someone get hurt over something like this, when it's not necessary. There's a nice building at 701 Dale Mayberry they can go to. It's a nice, big building. They could use that one. And it's much easier not around relatives, I mean, not around families or nothing like that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Excuse me, sir?
Councilman Gudes, yes, sir?
How long has that daycare center been there? Well, sir?
Mr. Palias. Sir, I've been there for 50 years.
The daycare been there 50 years?
Yes, sir. Actually, it's been there longer, but it's actually been a daycare for 55 years.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. We'll sanitize the lectern and have the next speaker. Okay, next speaker, please. Yes, ma'am, state your name.
Alice Pascarelli.
All right, go ahead.
I'm sure he's an upstanding citizen, okay? I have lived on this block for 65 years. I've seen it grow. You can't stop growth, I get that. However, this picture, they're so keen to point out North B. Let me point out some other places for you, okay? Daycare, my brother's house, my house, my sister's house, my sister's house, my sister's house, all over here, family, neighbors we've known for years. This is a walkable neighborhood. It's coming, up and coming. New neighbors are moving in every day. They walk the neighborhood. This is not going to help us. I have concerns about the traffic, as been discussed. You asked about, ask about the call volume between, or call volume, I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous. The parking situation, when it's the kids' rooms-to-go, they're going in there, they're buying furniture, they're spending some time in there. When you're going to a liquor store, you get in and out, and the volume is high. I Googled while I was sitting here watching the previous folks here, how many liquor stores are within five miles of 33609, which is where they want to put this? You got Total Wine, you got ABC, you have Lukin Store, which is just up by West Shore. They already have a, a store there that they do very well at. Windexy, Publix, there's three Publix located within this area. They have liquor stores. West Shore Liquor and Cigars. How many liquor stores do we need? The traffic, they speed down that. You can yell at them, you can put signs out there, and you're going to add alcohol to all that and party and mix. It's not going to work. So I'm asking you, for our community's sake, do not approve this. It is, there's enough liquor stores around, there's enough establishments to entertain these people. There's restaurants. Don't ruin our community. And it just keeps getting further and further in, and I just beg you, don't do it. Don't do it. It's going to affect all of our lives and ruin this neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll sanitize the lectern, and next speaker. If we could switch over to the, the kiosk. Do we have anybody else here for public comment on this item? Yes, sir, I see you, sir. Go ahead. Please state your name.
My name is Toy Palias. I live at 3814 West Gray Street. I am a former City of Tampa Fire Marshal Inspector, and I also live on that block. But my family failed to mention to you, I've lived there for 60 years. They've been there longer because they're older than me. As far as development, I have no problem with development, but as far as liquor stores, we've got three in our neighborhood, as my sister's already mentioned. And there's, and you want to add another one, the same company wants to add another liquor store. It's like adding another McDonald's, I guess. Now, as far as the man use around that, it's all zoned residential. And Mr. Dingfelder, you're correct. It's 200 feet from the corners of the building. As far as the daycare, it's right across the street. Accidents, yeah, they happen there all the time. It's one of the highest incidents in Tampa. I've been there many times on the back of an engine in my neighborhood. I've also rendered assistance when accidents happen in front of me. I do the Good Samaritan thing. Approving another liquor store, you're talking to a firefighter. There's been too many fire deaths from liquor. You roll up, you can smell it. And you know what? I don't think I want that in my neighborhood. And as far as citizens, good citizen votes. As far as Lukin Corporation, they're just another corporation. I love them right where they're at. Coming to my neighborhood that close, nah, they can stay right where they're at. They're doing just fine. I appreciate the time, and I appreciate the voice that you give us, but at the same time, everybody who got elected there said they were going to empower the people, and that's what I'd like to do. Vote no? If not, put a moratorium until you can figure it out, because COVID is not going to leave us anytime soon. You've got a bigger fish to fry with the other alcohol sales and the assemblies. Adding this is just adding fuel to the fire. Thank you, and I appreciate your time. Any questions?
Thank you very much, sir. All right, anybody else? No? All right, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
All right, are there any questions from council before we go back to Mr. Grandoff?
Well, thank you, thank you for your service, the gentleman.
Yes?
We have one more person that would like to speak.
Oh, okay, all right. We'll sanitize the lectern, and we'll get the next speaker. One more speaker. Yes, sir, please state your name.
Christopher Jallow with Big Town Liquors, also known as Lukin's Wine and Spirits. Mr. Chairman, council members, thank you for having me here this evening. I know it's getting a little bit late, so I'll try and keep it brief.
Wait, just, just a moment. Mr. Shelby?
Mr. Grandoff, is this part of your rebuttal time? Is this, am I correct in that? This is the gentleman that you referred to?
Yes, Mr. Uh, Mr.
Will this be part of your rebuttal?
He can be, uh, he's my client, he's in favor. He can speak in favor. If you'd rather him take my rebuttal time, that's fine also, whatever you prefer, Mr. Shelby.
Normally, normally, if he were your client, he'd speak at your time. Did, was there any time remaining when Mr. Grandoff was making his presentation? Madam Clerk, do you have a recollection?
I believe he still has five minutes.
Okay, well, if he can speak in my case in chief and take those five minutes, then I'll handle rebuttal.
Okay. He didn't use his whole time, so. All right, go ahead, sir.
Thank you. I'd just like to thank you guys all again for allowing us to be here today, and I wanted to give you all an opportunity, not only to hear from me, and also potentially ask me any questions that you may have about our operations and what we intend to do at this facility, other than what was already read to you. As, as Mr. Grandoff stated, Lukin's Wine and Spirits operates six liquor stores, wine, spirits, and beer retail stores throughout Pinellas and Hillsborough County. Lukin's Wine and Spirits has been around for over 30 years. Unlike the picture that my soon-to-be, hopefully, neighbors have tried to paint of us, we are not some seedy liquor store establishment that allows vagrants to come in and out of our facilities. Lukin's operates what we like to think of first-class retail facilities, bright, vibrant, give back to the community. One of the things that were harped upon a lot by my neighbors were what public health, safety, welfare do we provide to a community? Well, I think it's pretty self-evident. We provide jobs. We provide a sense of economic boom to our communities. We employ over 60-plus people just at our liquor store facilities. That is outside of all the other business establishments we operate. During this pandemic, and unfortunately, you know, it struck a lot of people to their nerve. People could not work. Not only were we able to continue to stay operational and employ our employees, we were able to employ people from other industries, hospitality, the hospitality industries that weren't able to continue with their work, and give them somewhere to come work for us. Even when we didn't have spots available, we took people on so that way people can have a sense of purpose and get back to work. And as I mentioned, Lukin's has been around for 30-plus years. We are a family business that our money and our community stays within this community. We are not the, no offense to the Walmarts or the Total Wines of the world, where they're, they're outstate, out-of-city corporations that money goes back out of state and outside of these cities. We like to have a sense of community. We give back to our communities. And, and to address some of the concerns that were raised, this is a packaged off-premise liquor store. There is, by code and by law, customers cannot leave the liquor store, pop open a bottle, and start consuming it on premises. Unlike some of the restaurants and bars that are adjacent to us, there is no consumption on premises at any of our liquor stores. We, we take pride in getting along with our neighbors. We hope to get along with the neighbors who are even here today. We wish no ill intent or harm from a, from a parking and, and vagrancy standpoint. I, I don't see there to be any change from what currently exists at Dale Mayberry now. As was mentioned by one of the council members, it was, it was already operating as a retail store establishment. We are not expanding the size of the property. We are not looking to go further into the community. We are keeping the exterior of the building almost identically the same, changes to the interior to brighten it, to make it more lively, to give it more of a vibrant feel. So respectfully, I, I do disagree with the comments that were raised by my neighbors, and I, I would, I would allow them to give us the opportunity to prove that. The property itself has fences surrounding the neighbors that are directly adjacent to us, to protect them from our property even further. But again, I, I open the floor to the council. If anybody has questions for me as to our operations and what we do, and what we may not be doing, please, I welcome them.
Councilman Citro.
Mr. Chair, thank you very much. Yes, sir, thank you very much. What are the hours of operations of this liquor store going to be?
So, we obviously do not intend to operate the hours outside the city ordinances, but almost all of our current stores operate from 8:00 a.m. till 10:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday, and then Sunday is, it was in, for the most part, 11:00 a.m. till 9:00 p.m., but the, I know the City of Tampa just changed their ordinance to allow liquor stores to open up earlier in the day, or the sale of alcohol to be earlier than 11:00. I don't believe we've implemented that change at our current Tampa location, but none of our liquor stores have ever opened past midnight or 11:00 p.m. So even though we're allowed to stay open later, we do not. And for family reasons, we want our employees to go home. We want them to get home safely. We don't want them driving around at night. My father had instilled that on my brother and I at a very young age, when we were operating other retail stores, not just liquor stores, about not needing to exceed or take advantage of every nook and cranny. But we will always stay within the ordinance requirements.
I appreciate that. You know, I, I, I'm just wondering, how, how many beds, children's beds people are buying as opposed to a bottle of Cardo? You know, how, how many, how many children's trusted drawers are being bought as opposed to, you know, Lindeman's Bin 61? How, how many, you know, closets, children's closets are being bought as opposed to a four, a 24-pack of Bud Light? So I, I, I'm assuming, I, I can't say for sure, I don't know, but would you think there would be a heck of a lot more traffic at this type of establishment as opposed to a rooms-to-go children's, children's store?
Not operating rooms-to-go or children's furniture stores. Rooms-to-go is probably one of the largest furniture stores in the country, so I'm assuming they were fairly busy. I can't speak for them in their operation. Again, our property is directly off of Dale Mayberry. I don't believe, and, and the entrance to our parking lot is not far into Fig Street, I don't believe we're going to bring any additional traffic off of or onto Dale Mayberry than already exists on Dale Mayberry. As the council members know, Dale Mayberry is a very busy roadway. I think we would just simply be taking advantage of the traffic that already exists, as opposed to bringing on a significantly larger flow of traffic.
Again, I, I always have concerns when any type of establishment, retail establishment, abuts a, a residential area, especially with large parking lots and, and in the evenings, at nights, cars headlights shining into somebody's house, or, or, you know, things that might keep people awake at night. But I, I thank you for your honesty and your answers to my questions. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, sir. Anybody else? If not, we go to Mr. Grandoff. Mr. Grandoff.
You can have it sanitized, Mr. Grandoff.
Yes, sir, just, please wait a moment. We're going to have the lectern sanitized, sir.
Okay, sure.
We keep to a process.
And just for the record, the clerks did receive written comments for this item.
All right, we'll receive and follow those.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Grandoff, yes, sir, this is your rebuttal.
Yes, sir, five minutes, correct?
Yes, sir.
I'll do it in less. Thank you, Chris, for your explanation of your operation, and thank you for your questions, members of council. A few moments, a few points I'd like to state on rebuttal. Most of these statements were conclusory. There's no evidence put in the record to demonstrate a significant impact to public health, safety, and welfare. We have justified the entitlement to the waiver, given the, just the geographics of the site and the distance of the parking lot to the homes. What is the difference? That's a very rhetorical question. What is the difference? There will not be consumption on the premises. This is a quality spirits and wine store. There will be no loitering, and the statement from the opposition about other liquor stores and there are, quote, "enough around" is not the test for special use application. That is not, not evidence. This gentleman wants to compete in a fair market, and he has proven that he has the metal to do so, and that he's the responsible businessman, and I suggest to you that he is deserving of, of your approval. I've considered Ms. Hatley's tardy letter to us in opposition. She, again, states conclusory that we're not in, in conformance with the general standards set forth in 27-120, but offers no evidence, and she states that there'll be a disruptive and intrusive impact on surrounding properties, but no evidence to that effect. And you cannot base your decision on, on those types of statements. I respectfully request your approval this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Any questions or comments from council? Any questions or comments from council before we get a motion to close? No?
Question. Councilman Goode, yes, sir. Ms. Doc, is she still there with us?
Yes.
How many feet of alcohol established of a liquor license to a school or daycare?
I'm sorry, Councilman Goode, can you repeat the question?
How many feet is allowed or not allowed for a liquor license or liquor established next to a daycare or a school?
Yes, so LaShawn Dock Development Corporation, Councilman Goode, for this request, they are not required to request that separation from a school or a daycare. This request, the requirement is to have the distance separation from a residential use.
And how many feet is the daycare from the establishment?
I don't know the exact measurement. I just don't have it. I can just only give.
Okay. If you don't have it, no problem. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Dingfelder?
Thank you. Two things. I recall years ago, I guess, that there was a distance requirement to schools and daycare. That's probably what Mr. Goode is referring to. Did the code change?
So, this location is in the West Shore Business Center, but the West Shore Business Center is 250 feet to residential uses.
But no, but there's no distance separation to schools or daycare?
Correct. All of the areas of the city is from residential uses, institutional uses, and other AB cells establishments.
The West Shore is an exception.
Correct.
For whatever reason. Okay. And then, Ms. Doc, you indicated early in the hearing that you might be able to give us some specificity about how many homes would be in that circle?
Yes, ma'am.
Were you able to approximate that?
Well, I would like to clarify, the distance separation is measured in a straight line from the boundary of the alcoholic beverage sales area to the property boundary of the specified surrounding use. So that residential use that you saw to the south would be the closest in distance, and the measurement is taken from the actual structure for the proposed alcohol beverage So that is why.
Structure, not the apartment.
That was the closest residential to the location, because it doesn't go from the property boundary of the request, it's from the actual structure itself. The other point of clarification I would just like to mention is this request is for a package sales, for consumption off-premise only. So consumption cannot occur outside of the establishment. You must be at least 500 feet away.
All right, so it's uncontroversial that there's at least one or more, and Ms. Doc, I need you to confirm this or not, it's uncontroversial, uncontroversial that there's at least one or more residences that are within the 250-foot area, correct?
There is more than one within 250 feet, correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments from council before I ask for a motion to close? Do we have a motion to close? We have a motion to close from Councilman Goode, second from Councilmember Carlson, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Well, what is the pleasure of council? I can go down the line unless somebody wants to take this item. Would anybody like to read item number 11? We would have to first.
Mr. Chairman, can I pass that? Let me pass out my files, I don't have the paperwork in front of me to be able to recommend or to actually read where I'm going. But I'd just like to say that, in my opinion, the burden is on the petitioner, the petitioner to show, I mean, they're asking for a waiver, and therefore, in asking for the waiver, to me, the burden is on them, should be on them, to show that, you know, that it's, that it does not impact the health, safety, and welfare of the community, or, and also that it is compatible with the surrounding residential environment. And I would argue strenuously that they failed, it failed on both of those accounts. If this was an isolated building, you know, further up the street, originally, when I heard about, when I saw this, I thought that maybe it was the Rooms-to-Go up the street that was isolated from the community, but this isn't isolated from the community. This, their access point is right there on the side street. I think it was either, I think it was Fifth. That's their access, and it's, and some people might decide to go in and out of Dale Mayberry, that's fine, but other people might come through the neighborhood on the church side. And I think that's problematic. We have established, single-family homes and families that have been there for fifty and sixty years. Heck, one family owns the whole darn street, you know? And I just don't think that they've, that they've met their burden. I think that it's incompatible, and it's, and therefore, I don't believe that they should be granted the waiver. Now, I apologize, my fellow councilmen, because I don't have, or what, you know, what I'd like to have in front of me in order to make the motion, but I'd ask.
I'll make the motion, Mr. Dingfelder.
Councilman, I'm sorry, Mr. Shelby, before any motions are made, do we see about reading this ordinance? And if it fails or does not get a second, do we have to go through that process, or can we go directly to, you know, deny?
In order to approve, you have to read it by title only. In order to deny it, you don't. But I just wanted to take this opportunity to refer you again to the staff reports that you have been provided, particularly page four, no, page five, regarding the special uses, 27-132. It does say, for an S-2 permit, city council shall grant waivers if they find that the application, after granting the waiver, is consistent with the applicable general standards set forth in section 27-129. And again, that refers you back to the general standards that must be met, and that begins on page three of your staff reports, and it continues on through page four. And I just direct your attention to that. And of course, I believe you have the kind of verbiage that you might need to be able to make, both whether you approve it or deny it, but I ask that you, obviously, Councilmember Dingfelder did state some findings that he believed are applicable, and depending, again, what Councilmember Goode's motion is, he can adopt those findings into his motion.
Thank you very much.
Or add additional.
Thank you very much.
To that.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
May I be heard for a moment?
Yes.
My client would like to offer.
We're closed.
We have closed the public hearing, sir.
Okay.
We have a motion open from Councilman Viera, second from Councilman Citro in favor. Aye, aye. Okay, go ahead, sir.
May we discuss a limitation on hours of operation to allay some of the concerns of the neighborhood? Remember, this is Dale Mayberry, Donatello's is right behind us, going up and down the street also, and consumption on premises. This is a retail store on Dale Mayberry, and he's willing to limit his hours of operation to something that may be more compatible.
If you wish to do so, I don't think it's gonna change the neighborhood's mind, but...
No, I'm not here to change the neighborhood's mind. I'm here to have the law applied correctly to my client.
I mean, if you wish to, go ahead and do it, and then, you know, wherever the vote goes, the vote goes. Mr. Shelby.
May I have Mr. Jallow state those hours?
Go ahead, sir.
Chris, come on.
Well, just address the, sorry, counsel, I know we're going back to this, but address in terms of the impact, as Mr. Grandoff mentioned, there's a restaurant directly adjacent to the daycare center that allows for consumption of alcohol on premises, a Chinese restaurant and sushi restaurant. There's, Donatello's has been there for years, allows for consumption of alcohol on premises within the exact same vicinity of this residential community as our retail establishment.
The reason the hearing was reopened was to reestablish hours only.
Oh, sorry, and about the hours, as I mentioned, we are, Monday through Saturday, we are 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. currently. I can say that we won't not be open past midnight, which is, a lot of liquor stores in the City of Tampa and Hillsborough County are open well past midnight. Sundays, again, our current operations don't exceed 10:00 to 8:00 or 9:00 p.m. We'd be willing to put that on the record, that those are what our hours would be and not exceed, if that allows for reduced impact to any neighborhood or surrounding communities.
Again, counsel, with that being said, if that is the representation, you can close the public hearing if that, if that makes, if this is approved, it would be done.
It would be closed.
We have a motion closed from Councilman Dingfelder, do we have a second? Second from Councilmember Carlson, all in favor. Aye.
And again, I believe Mr. Grandoff offered that as a way, or a...
Yes.
To mitigate perhaps what the adverse impacts are. Again, the determination is city council.
Yes.
Determination based on the competent substantial evidence.
Yep. So as a courtesy, does anybody wish to read number 11? If not, we go to Councilmember Goode's. All right, Councilmember Goode, yes, sir?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move to deny file AB 2-21-03, due to failure of the advocates to meet the burden of proof to provide competent substantial evidence that special use meets the general standard section 27-129 of the City of Tampa Code, specifically that, that use will establish precedent of or encourage more intensive or incapable uses in the surrounding area, y'all can fail to meet the burden of proof to provide competent substantial evidence to justify the granting of requested waivers.
We have a motion from Councilmember Goode's. Yes, Mr. Shelby?
And, Councilmember Goode, did you wish to incorporate into that motion the findings of Councilmember Dingfelder's comments?
That's correct.
And if there's anything else you wish to add, or any other council member? Thank you.
Councilmember Goode, with the incorporation of the comments by Councilmember Dingfelder, seconded by Councilmember Carlson, roll call vote.
Citro?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Dingfelder?
Yes.
Goode?
Yes.
Miranda?
Hello.
Viera?
Yes.
And Maniscavo?
Yes.
Motion carry with Miranda voting no.
So the motion to deny the application has passed. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time this evening.
Yes, sir. Next up is item 12, and then we have one more, item number 13. I don't believe we have public comment down on the second floor for this item. Item number 12, please go ahead. Yes, ma'am?
Yes, Chairman and Council, LaShawn Dock Development Corporation.
Actually, before we begin, the clerk's, the clerk's office has asked for a quick break, just a five-minute recess. All righty, five-minute recess, I apologize.
She came sneaking up thinking I'm sleeping, y'all. Met her at the back door. I handed her her suitcase. She told her, "Don't come back no more." She turned and she was leaving as she looked dead straight at me. Said, "If you think I can't find me another man, honey, you must be crazy." I said, "Do it. You got a real good idea, honey, better get to it." "'Cause the place you missed staying have become the place you ain't. And everything's in your suitcase except your wig hair powder and..." A friend of mine used to run one time with a gal named Lou. There seemed to be no end all to the evil she could do. She took him for everything he had, and she called him a clown. They put that boy in Huntsville 'cause he shot that woman down. Do it. Better leave while you can, honey, better get to it. Get to it. I thought you was an angel, but your chest fell instead. I don't want no cheating, lying woman sleeping in my bed. She was nineteen years old, y'all, a mother's only child. She did not have no shame. She took my money, hard-earned money, and spent it all on some other man. Oh, do it. Better get gone, honey, get to it. I said, "Do it, do it, do it, do it." Better get to it. I thought you was an angel, but your chest fell instead. I don't want no cheating, lying woman sleeping in my bed.
Roll call, please.
Viera. Goods. Carlson.
Here.
Dingfelder. Citro.
Here.
Miranda.
And Manis Kaku.
Here.
There's a physical coroner present.
Dingfelder is here for the record.
Thank you very much, sir. All right, we'll go to item number twelve. LaShawn Doc, take it away.
Yes, Chairman and Council, if I may share my screen. Thank you. And Council, this next item is AB 22106. It's for the property at eighty-six eighty-four Hunters Village Road. The applicant is represented by Joe Diaz. The request is for AB sales as a small venue classification for beer, wine, liquor, packaged sales of premise consumption only. The AB sales area consists of one thousand seven hundred square feet. That is a total indoor area only. The required parking is six hundred and forty-six spaces. The parking provided is six hundred and seventy-one spaces. The AB sales hours proposed are consistent with Chapter fourteen. The petition is proposing the use as retail sales shoppers' goods, and this is not considered a change of use. The property has a future land use designation of SMU six, which is a mixed-use category, and this is located in a mixed-use corridor village. The distance separation requirement along mixed-use corridor villages is two hundred and fifty feet from residential uses and two hundred and fifty feet from other AB sales establishments. There is one waiver requested, and that is the distance separation reduction to zero, and that is for other AB sales establishments. There is a Sprouts Market located within the overall site, which is the same zoning lot, and I'll show you that momentarily in the PD site plan and the special use site plan submitted. This is the special use site plan. And to orient you, this is the site. This is Bruce B. Downs that's located east of the site. This is Hunters Village Road that's located along the south. This is the request, the property, that is shaded in gray. I have a close-up of the site plan. So this is the site, and this is Bruce B. Downs that's located along the east. This is Hunters Village Road on the south. This is the subject site that is shaded in gray, and that's the AB sales area proposed of one thousand seven hundred square feet. And you'll see this is the Sprouts that's located within this same property. So access to the property is along Bruce B. Downs or access is also located on Hunters Village Road at these three access points. This is an aerial of the site. So the site is identified in the red dotted line. You can see this is a part of the PD. South of Bruce B. Downs, on the east side of Bruce B. Downs, rather, is PDA, and that is a part of Hunters Green. Here are some photos of the site. So on the left is the picture of the subject site, which is located within this suite. On the right is the site entrance. This is a view on the left looking south on Bruce B. Downs. And then the picture on the right is entrance to the subject site. The Development Review and Compliance Staff has reviewed the application and finds it inconsistent. There are no changes required to the site plan between first and second reading.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
If you have any questions.
Any questions or comments from Council members? All right. Mr. Diaz, you were not sworn in. If you could raise your right hand, we'll swear you in, sir.
I don't have a question, I just...
Your microphone, sir.
Just as a disclosure, I'm not within the affected area, but I do reside in Hunters Green, so I just wanted to note that. When we developed Hunters Lake, I disclosed that, and I'm not, again, within the affected areas, but just for public disclosure that I'm a Hunters Green resident, for whatever that matters.
Are you within the notice area?
No.
And, sir, that doesn't affect you, and you can be fair and impartial and base your decision on the evidence.
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Diaz, if you could raise your right hand, we'll swear you in.
I have.
Do you swear firm you would tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Diaz.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of Council. My name is Joseph Diaz. My offices are thirty-two forty-two Henderson Boulevard, Suite B ten. I am here before you on application AB 221-06, where I am seeking an S two classification, which would allow for the sale of beer, wine, and liquor for off-premise consumption. The subject site consists of seventeen hundred square feet. In the application, we would normally need to satisfy the partner requirements, which we do, the distance separation from residential uses, which we do, and the distance separation from other AB classifications, which we don't. And that's where we're seeking the waiver. The waiver is somewhat deceptive because it says that there is zero feet. In reality, we are a hundred and fifty-five feet away from the Sprouts Grocery Store, but because we are located within the same parcel, the city interprets that to be zero. If you were to go back and look at the site plan, if you were to try and wet zone the northernmost portion of the structure, that location would be more than two hundred and fifty feet. But yet, once again, that location would appear to have a zero distance separation. We would submit that the anticipated use of the site complies with all of the criteria set forth in Section twenty-seven one twenty-nine. And let me change here for a second. I'm a little confused because I'm looking at the staff report, and the staff report on page three tells me that they want me to do some modifications to the site plan before the second reading, and it's just been announced that no changes are made. So I'm not really quite sure, assuming that you all approve this application, whether or not we need to make any changes to the site plan. But in recap, we satisfied the requirements either of twenty-seven one twenty-nine or the distance separations, with the exception of the other ABs, and we would respectfully request that you approve our application.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions or comments from City Council members? Hearing none. Do we have anybody in the public that wishes to speak on this item, item number twelve? Anybody in the public?
There are no registered speakers to speak on this item.
Thank you very much. Do we have anybody in person on the second floor? I checked before we started. I don't think there are any, but... Anybody on the second floor? I think the room was cleared out.
Well, my understanding is that there is nobody on the second floor, but it's certainly a good idea to ask and to see if there is. And now that you see none, it's, I think, evident...
Do we have a motion to close?
Oh, and I have a question, if I may, before.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Just really quick to the applicant. What kind of an establishment? Is this just, what, buy alcohol, then consume it off premises?
It's a package store, sir.
Sorry, what?
It is a package store. You would come in and you would buy either beer, wine, or conventional liquor, and then you would take it home or wherever you're going to consume it. But it's not going to be consumed at the site.
Cool. Thank you, sir.
Do we have a motion to close? Motion closed for Councilman Goods, second for Councilman Citro. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right. Who wishes to read item number twelve? Councilman Citro?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. File number AB 221-06. Ordinance being presented for first reading consideration in order approving the special use permit S two for alcohol beverage sales, small venue, packaged sales, off-premise consumption open only, and making lawful the sale of beverages regardless of alcohol content, beer, wine, and liquor at or from a certain lot, plot, or tract of land located at eighty-six eighty-four Hunters Village Road, Unit two-ten Tampa, Florida, as more particularly described in Section two, that all ordinance or parts of ordinance in conflict are repealed, providing for an effective date, and that the use is compatible with the contiguous and surrounding property and the use will not establishment establish a precedent or encourage more intensive or incompatible use of the surrounding area.
Do we have a second? Second from Councilman Miranda. Roll call vote.
Yes.
Citro.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Goods.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Viera.
Yes.
And Manis Kaku.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously. Second reading and adoption will be held on March eighteenth at nine-thirty a.m.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Mr. Diaz. Have a good evening, sir.
Excuse me?
Yes, sir.
Can I get a clarification on whether or not I need to revise the site plan? Because I heard no during the hearing, but the staff report says I do. Do I leave the site plan as it is?
I don't... LaShawn Doc, Development Coordination. I don't have a record of any site plan changes that are required. So your final site plan that you submitted, it's fine. I think that was a comment from before, but you're fine. You don't have any revisions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We go to the last item of the day. Item number thirteen.
Yes, Chairman and Council, LaShawn Doc again with Development Coordination. If I can share my screen.
Mr. Diaz, if you could log off or mute yourself, sir. Mr. Diaz?
Log off. You're on candid camera, Jeff.
All right. Thank you very much. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you again, Council. LaShawn Doc, Development Coordination. This next item is AB 22108. It's for the property located at sixteen forty West Snow Avenue. The applicant is represented by David Singer. This request is for a small venue classification for consumption on premises and packaged sales consumption off premises. The AB sales area consists of one thousand nine hundred eighty square feet of indoor area and four hundred ninety-seven square feet of outdoor area for a total AB sales area of two thousand four hundred and seventy-seven square feet. This would be contained on the first floor only. Total parking spaces required is eight hundred and forty-one spaces. Nine hundred and ninety-three spaces are provided. The AB sales hours proposed are consistent with Chapter fourteen. The application proposes the use of restaurant and retail sales. This property is a part of the PD and is located in the Hyde Park Urban Village. The distance separation requirements are two hundred and fifty feet from other AB sales establishments. There's one waiver requested, and that is to reduce the distance to zero feet to other AB sales establishments. This is the site plan that was submitted. So this is the site, and this is the subject area requested in this black dotted line, in that area. So to orient you on this site, this is Snow Avenue to the north. This is South Dakota Avenue on the east, and then this is Rome Avenue that is on the west. This is the parking garage that is located on Rome Avenue. So this request, this site, is the corner suite within this building. And this is the indoor area proposed of nineteen eighty square feet and the outdoor area of four hundred and ninety-seven square feet. And I have a close-up of the site plan that I can show. So this is Rome Avenue. The parking garage would be located over here. This is the site, the subject site. That's the dotted line for that area. So the area proposes two indoor areas and an outdoor area. This is an aerial of the site. This is how, the area is highlighted in red, in the red dotted area, which is part of the PD, as mentioned earlier. This is Rome Avenue that's to the west of the site. And then to the west, you have residential uses. Your pictures of the subject site on the left is the site in question. So this is the location. It's identified with the coming soon listed. On the right, the picture on the right is the view on Rome Avenue. On the left is a view northeast of the site. This is on Snow Avenue. And on the right is to the west, which is some of the residential. This is the north view on Rome Avenue. The site would be in this corner off the screen, off of this picture to the right. The Development Review and Compliance Staff has reviewed their request and finds it inconsistent. Site plan modifications are required between first and second reading. Council, I'm available if you have any questions. This concludes my presentation.
Any questions? Councilman Dingfelder?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Doc? The across the street, catty corner, you had a picture of the condominiums or townhomes. I think they're brick townhomes. Right. Isn't that within two hundred and fifty feet? And/or are we once again not addressing two hundred and fifty feet to residential?
So that is, that is a residential use that is there. Let's see what was actually listed. If I can go back just a second. So it's in an urban village. In the Hyde Park Urban Village is where it's located. So in urban villages, it's two hundred and fifty feet from other AB sales establishments. If you're in a mixed-use corridor village, it's two hundred and fifty feet from residential uses and other AB sales establishments. If you're in a business center, it's from residential.
So at some point, the council, in the past eight years or so, eliminated the two hundred and fifty feet requirement for urban villages, and that includes Hyde Park, which is where this subject is, but that also includes East Tampa and West Tampa and Davis Island, et cetera, et cetera. They had, some council eliminated the two hundred and fifty-foot requirement to residential. Is that correct, Ms. Doc?
Correct, in urban villages. Now, if you are not in an urban village, you're not in a business center, you're not in a mixed-use corridor, and in other areas of the city, then you're required a thousand feet from residential use.
Right, but the urban villages I just described are massive. Are massive. They're East Tampa, West Tampa. That's like half the city already. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? If not, we will go to Mr. Singer. Please raise your right hand, sir, so we can swear you in.
Do you swear firm you would tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, Council. David Singer. My office is one-on-one East Kennedy, Suite twenty-eight-hundred here in Tampa. Nice to see everybody. I know you've all had a long day, so I will try and keep this brief. Thank you, Ms. Doc, for your presentation. If it's possible, I'd like to share my screen and just show a few slides. This is my first time using this presentation technology, so...
Go ahead, sir. We see it. You may.
Okay, you can see it?
Yes, go ahead.
Very good. Good, so what you should see on your screen is the name of the proposed establishment, which will be Boosie Champagne and Cocktails. Boosie is a region in France which is known for its champagne, and that is the genesis of the name. Let's see. You see that? It's located in Hyde Park Village. I think all of you are very familiar with the location. It is an urban village. It is teeming with retail and restaurants and really is a lively part of the city. And the owners have done a really nice job of making it very walkable, retail and restaurant very approachable. And we hope Boosie will be a nice addition to that. Again, you can see here the zoning in the area, part of a large PD. The aerial of the site, again, the location towards the corner there on Rome. Again, this outline here is the actual site itself. As Ms. Doc described the parking situation, there are nine hundred and ninety-three provided, eight hundred and forty-one are required. So there is enough parking here to satisfy the use. Here is an interior look at what the site ultimately will look like. On the bottom here, this is the entrance, a couple outdoor tables, indoor bar. You have the restaurants here. You have a private dining and private event rooms here in the back with the wine cellar and storage as well in the back. Here are some drawings of what the site ultimately will look like as you walk in, and these are conceptual, and it will be easier and a little more fun to go from these drawings to ultimately these finished renderings for what the site will look like. It should be a very classy and elegant addition to Hyde Park Village. We are requesting the waiver to be within two hundred and fifty feet of another AB establishment. This is actually within the same zoning parcel as Meat Market. It is down the street. Technically, it is within the same zoning parcel, which is why the waiver is requested. You also see in your packet, I hope, there are two letters that we received in support, asking that you approve this application. They are from the townhomes that are directly across the street. Those two, those red brick townhomes that Mr. Dingfelder was referring to, those letters are in support from those residences. We have received no objection from any other residents. The business community is excited to welcome Boosie to Hyde Park Village. We believe we meet the requirements of Section twenty-seven one twenty-nine, and we would ask for your approval. I am here to answer any of your questions.
Do we have any questions at this time? No? Do we have anybody in the public that wishes to speak on item number thirteen? Do we have anybody registered?
There are no registered speakers for this item.
And do we have anybody on the second floor in person? That room is empty. All right. Do we have a motion to close? Councilman Goods with the motion to close. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second for Councilman Citro. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilman Carlson, this is your half of the Hyde Park Village. We split the other half. Would you like to read it? I stopped, my district stops at Goody-Goody, right at the door, and the other side is Carlson's.
Wait, should I read the ordinance or read this?
Ordinance being presented for first reading.
I'll read it.
File, I'm, file number AB 22108. Ordinance being presented for first reading consideration. Ordinance approving a special use permit S two for alcoholic beverage sales, small venue consumption, on premises and packaged sales, off premises consumption, and making lawful the sale of beverages regardless of alcohol content, beer, wine, and liquor on that certain lot, plot, or tract of land located at sixteen forty West Snow Avenue, Tampa, Florida, as more particularly described in Section two, providing that all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict are repealed, providing effective date.
And there's a little bit more for you, Council member, if you can add that language as well.
In adding that?
In the site.
I just said adding what he's...
Pardon?
Say that again?
The special use findings. Do you have that in front of you?
Here, sir.
Yeah, and just saying that the use is compatible with contiguous and surrounding property. It will not establish a precedent or encourage more intensive or incompatible use of the surrounding area. It will ensure that public health, safety, and general welfare are located within the proposed area.
And there's a finding that it meets the general standards of twenty-seven one twenty-nine?
Yes.
Thank you.
We have a motion from Councilmember Carlson. Do we have a second? Back to Councilmember Goods. Roll call vote.
Citro?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Dingfelder?
Yes.
Goods?
Yes.
Yes.
Viera?
Yes.
And Manis Kaku?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously. Second reading and adoption will be held on March eighteenth at nine-thirty a.m.
Thank you very much. That concludes our agenda. We did new business. Unless there's anything else, we'll reconvene at the Waffle House. All right, can I get a...
Wait a second, wait a second. I can't let that go on.
It's a joke.
It's a joke.
I'm going home.
Move to receiving file.
We have motion receiving file from Councilman Citro, second for Councilman Goods. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? We are adjourned. Thank you.